Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
All right. We will now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2022 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. Anybody for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? Okay. Nobody for public comment here, nobody on the Zoom. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All right, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that public hearing is adjourned. I'd like to call the next public hearing to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Do we do roll call again? All right, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
All right, we'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County to create line item numbers reflecting Luzerne County's internal management of the Hazleton Broad Street Exchange Building. Anybody for public comment? Anybody in the room? Anybody on Zoom?
Motion to adjourn?
There's a motion. All in favor? Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. And it is now 6:01, so we can also start our voting session. I'd like to call that to order. We've had the moment of silence, Pledge of Allegiance, and our two public hearings. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Attorney scheme, would you please announce the executive session?
Yes, prior to this meeting, we had an executive session.
Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session wherein we discussed litigation matters, and there was three of them.
All right, thank you. Are there any deletions from the agenda this evening?
Not a deletion, Mr. Chair, but an alteration. I think Agenda Items 1 and 2, the ordinances, I don't think they follow the right protocol as outlined by the Charter, that they have to be introduced first formally and by four members of council. And I'm not opposed to the ordinance whatsoever, but I just don't think we're following the proper protocol, so looking for a second on that one.
Is this, we already had this discussion, I believe, correct, when we, the manager introduced the ordinances?
Correct, and I'd like to refer Councilman Haas
Yes, ma'am.
to an example of when we did this previously. You may even been on council at the time. February 21st, 2021, Items Number 8 and 9, they were budget amendments that were introduced by then manager Pedri. And also, if you would indulge me for a minute, if you look at the actual Charter and the Charter language, the section that outlines the powers and authorities of the county manager specifically, specifically notes that the county manager submits a budget, capital plan, they list all the budgets. So that gives specific power to an authority, to the county manager, to submit a budget, capital plan, et cetera. In Section 211, which is entitled "Ordinance Requirements," Section B says, "Proposed ordinance is dealing with the annual budgets, long-range operational plan, fiscal and capital plan, et cetera. In any other matter, the county manager is required by this charter to submit to county council in, in the form of the proposed ordinance, shall be considered automatically introduced and shall not require for affirmative vote." If, if, in the section authorizing the county manager, giving the county manager specific powers, if that didn't exist, perhaps your interpretation of Section 211B might be correct. But the fact that both of those sections exist, it would make 211B needless. So I disagree with you in your interpretation. There's been precedent where the county manager has introduced amendments to the budget. I cited one. Right now, there are numerous ones, and I think that the Charter is clear that the county manager has the authority to submit an ordinance that amends any of those budgets.
All right, is there a second on Mr. Haas's motion? All right, fails for lack of a second. Any other additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion tonight to delete Item Number 3, which reads, "Motion to adopt resolution providing tax exemption for reconstruction of deteriorated areas under the local economic revitalization tax assistance act for Hazleton Logistics." I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Go ahead.
I'm still in negoti, I'm negotiating with the developer based on your suggestions, and I just didn't have enough time.
Yeah, and I want to talk to my chef, too.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number 3 is deleted. All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. We'll now have public comment on Agenda Items only. Anybody in the audience for public comment? For Agenda Items only? Anybody on the Zoom? All right, we have a phone number?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo of Hazleton speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank you and the members of council for removing that, Item Number 3. I think there needs to be a lot more due diligence and left to the next meeting before it can be brought up. Also, with respect to the Broad Street Exchange Building, because I couldn't log on to the public hearing, I'd like to make my public comment on the Hazleton Broad Street Exchange Building ordinance. I would like to ask if either the county manager or if the Operational Services Division Agent Pacora can answer the question as far as with regards to the loan on that building by HUD during the commissioner days. Has that loan been paid off? If they can answer the question or find out for me, that would be great. I'm asking, Mr. Chairman and members of council, because there was a significant loan on that building back in the early 90s, when the Hazleton Downtown, the first Hazleton Downtown organization was formed, and there was a significant loan. I think it was somewhere in the ballpark of $2.5 to $3 million. So I was wondering if, I know that the county is the primary lien holder and the Hazel, the city of Hazleton is secondary lien holder, so I just was wondering if the manager or Operational Services Division Agent Pacora can answer that question if they have the answer. If not, then if they find out, they can get me the answer. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I can, I can do that, Chairman Lombardo.
Go ahead, Manager Crocamo.
It's still outstanding, but I will get the number for council, and all of council can have that number.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else on the Zoom? All right. If not, we will, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the March 12, 2024 voting session? There's a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Number 1, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County.
Second.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
First and a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 2, motion to adopt ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County to create line item numbers reflecting Luzerne County's internal management of the Hazleton Broad Street Exchange Building.
Second.
There's a first and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number, number 4, which is now number 3, motion to adopt resolution approving a modification American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project, city of Pittston, greater Pittston regional ambulance. Motion and a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
I abstain.
10 yes, no, no's, and one abstention passes.
All right, thank you.
Wait, point of order, Mr. Chairman, why'd you abstain?
Oh, abstain, I work for the system.
Oh, very good, thank you.
All right. And I also was conflicted out from reviewing that art modification along with, I think, one or two other ones in, when we did that review process, so I just keep it kosher. Number 4, motion to adopt resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project, Luzerne Wyoming County's Mental Health and Developmental Services. First and a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number 5, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project, Northeast Pennsylvania Land Bank.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, thank you. I'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. Anybody for public comment? Go ahead, sir. State your name and municipality, please. Is that, is the mic on? Okay, all right.
Hello, yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you.
John Arno in Hanover Township. I was here last meeting and was explaining about 911 calls. I ended up in jail, and it was a bunch of crap, and three months, the 911 calls disappeared. I was in jail for nine months. All right? Now, I had problems with what was going on. All right? I, I was stopped by the company because OSHA violations, FAA violations, labor law violations, PennDOT violations, workman's compensation fraud, unemployment fraud, and many greedy and moral problems. All right? They had to stop me. Okay, they had to stop me. I was threatened to be shot. Threatened to be shot, I went to the police and told them. You know what the police said? I said, "What if I'm driving by and he's behind a tree and takes a shot at me?" You know what the cops said? "Don't drive by any trees." All right? It was money stolen. I was pressing charges. I went and got subpoenas. I had one week before the statute of limitations was going to run out. All right? Guess what? When I told you about last month, that was the first time I was in jail. They came to me after I got out of jail, and they tried to talk to me, and I went to the cops and they still kept coming. All right? Then, 20 days later, because somebody gets upset, I got the US Marshals at my house. Lasers up in the sky. I got a 13-year-old kid there. I got 15 marshals there, and I didn't do a thing. Did not do a thing, except tell the truth and somebody was scared. All right? And that's a bunch of crap. Down here, the Dyke Project, the electrical, I worked on that. I said, "Let's go five feet," they threw me off the job. Ahmed Mohammed came up and he goes, "We're going to go three and a half feet." American asphalt hit it. There was no concrete on the duck bank. And it wasn't, it wasn't the owner's fault. The owner's a great guy. All right? Wasn't his fault, but that, that project, that electrical is not up to par. We had to go back to check at every 50 feet for holes, and it was no concrete around the plastic. All right? I threw two guys off the job that weren't doing the job right. I got thrown off the job by Ahmed. All right? Went down to Frackville. Walt fired me because he thought I did it. That's ridiculous. You know what I mean? And so, here comes Walt, I quit. I quit my job. He came to me and he said, "John," he said, "I didn't know what happened." He said, "Let me tell you." He's there, "Don't you worry about the job or the money. You do a good job, you do it well, and you'll get it." All right, now here's the problem. We did that project. Company came early. How much time do I got? Company came to us early about overtime.
Your time's up, sir.
I'm done?
Yeah.
All right, I'll see you next month, next week. All right?
Thank you.
Now, I got a lot to say.
Well, sir, just so you know, sir, this is, public comment period is supposed to be for the business of county council, things that we do. We don't really have a whole lot of control over some of the issues that you're talking about. If you want to talk to us individually, okay, if you want to talk to us individually, maybe we can help you that way. But you can come up and speak about, about issues that are related to county council and county government. I'm just, I'm just telling you what, based on what you talked about last time and, okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else for public comment in the room? Anybody on the Zoom? We have Ms. Williams.
Hello, Denise Williams, Kingston Township, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My comment is regarding the Controller's Annual Report in the work session. Controller Griffith's first PowerPoint slide states, "A Voice for the People." The Controller's office works together with the legislative and executive branches of the government to promote open and transparent government for the people of Luzerne County. Controller Griffith was very concerned about the campaign finance reports not being posted for public review on the county website for many years, and last year initiated an audit and through the audit process assisted the Bureau of Elections with properly posting them. I'm certain that Controller Griffith is aware that the website write-to-know requests have not been properly posted now for all of 2023 and so far all of 2024. They had been posted in a timely fashion for 10 years prior. Yet, this is not included in the upcoming year's audit. Why is that? I do not recall the county council discussing or deliberating on discontinuing the public postings. It's my understanding that the write-to-know request postings is administered by the Office of Law, which falls under the county manager's oversight. The county manager has also shared publicly on more than one occasion her stance on transparency and open government. In the vein of public trust and confidence, will the county manager stick to their words on transparency, open government, and voice for the people by addressing this lack of transparency and getting the write-to-know requests and their responses posted as soon as possible? And will the county council also be looking into resolving this public concern? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We have Jacob. Jacob, can you please state your last name and your municipality, please?
Jacob O'Connell, Shikshini, Pennsylvania.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I've been trying to catch up with you guys about doing a memorial walkway in the borough, actually right outside the borough, for a longtime resident, Edward Steibert. I've been dealing with Nick, I don't know if he's went over my ID at all with you guys.
Is that the end of your public comments, sir?
Well, I just don't know how much you know about if, if anyone's went over any of this with you guys, because I needed approval from you guys to move forward. I didn't know if anybody there was familiar with it.
I'm not, I can't speak for every member of council, but I know me personally as the chair, I was not aware of this project. Is there anybody else on council that was aware of it? I mean, if you'd like to contact us via our email addresses, you can find that on our county website. If you'd like to, you know, have a, have a conversation with us privately, that's, that's fine as well. We can certainly work on that with you. And if you have any other public comment to make regarding the project, you know, we're happy to hear it now.
Okay, yeah, well, basically what I was looking to do is to have a memorial, we have a walkway that goes from Shikshini over to Macon Aqua. I was looking to take Edward's pictures and have them painted along the inside of the wall and make it a memorial walkway to him. I was going to try to raise the funds through donations, and I was told by the borough of Shikshini and township of Macon Aqua that you guys had to approve it since it was basically your bridge and walkway. So I'm just reaching out to you guys to see if I can get permission to do that. I've been working with the Luzerne Foundation and Shikshini Forward, and basically just need approval. I was told to attend the meeting and get approval from you guys.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Actually, Manager Crocamo does have a response if you'd like to listen to it really quick.
Sir, why don't you contact me or the Office of Law, and we will draft what needs to be brought to council for their approval. So you can find my email and number on the website, and we'll work with you.
What was your last name again, I'm sorry?
Crocamo, C-R-O-C-A-M, as in Michael-O.
Okay, perfect, that's what I'll do. Thank you, guys, for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment? Mayor, Mayor Michael?
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Michael?
Sorry about that. Thank you, John. I just wanted to, on behalf of the city, thank council for their support of those two extensions on those two projects. They are very important projects, not only for the city but regional. Both represent multiple municipalities, so I just wanted to really let everybody know. Appreciate that support on those extensions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo of Hazleton speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad that the election board chair chimed in, because I was going to comment on Number 7 on the work session regarding the election update. I resubmitted my copy of my complaint to county council as a copy, so you're aware of what I submitted to the election board, election bureau, and the election board and bureau solicitor with respect to possible infraction and violation of state election law, Title 25, Section 2875, regarding the casting of the lots. And I spoke to, as I said to you at the previous meeting, I spoke to someone from the district attorney's office who, after the election board meeting when the casting of lots happened, and he directed me to submit the complaint to the bureau and the board. And my complaint was never forwarded to the district attorney's office for review. So I hope that the Office of Law and the election board, election bureau, would be able to forward that to the district attorney since he is present and he will be giving his annual report. Secondly, with regards to the bridge update, I have one question, Mr. Chair. Can you ask the engineering firm that's going to give that update to council, why wasn't option, the option to keep the bridge after the new one was constructed, you know, in perpetuity indefinitely listed? Because I don't remember that as an option when the Redevelopment Authority Board called the special meeting that Vice Chairman Thornton attended. I don't remember that option to keep the existing bridge permanently after the new bridge was built. So if someone could answer that question from either the engineering consultant or PennDOT, that would be really appreciative, or the county manager could answer that question if she knows the answer. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Raybo. Vice Chair Thornton would like to respond to the first part of your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Raybo, I received, as all of council did this afternoon, I received your email where you alleged a couple of violations committed in the election bureau, and you requested that we advance this and forward this to the district attorney, of which I did. I took your information and I sent that to the district attorney, Sam Sangadulci. I just want to let you know that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thornton. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else on the Zoom? All right, before we, before we leave, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to all the members of the administration who assisted with the viewing service for Judge Hagerty. Obviously, you know, we were happy to give the rotunda. He was a great man, great man for Luzerne County, particularly the council. I also want to specifically mention the Sheriff's Department. I thought it was a great showing, very professional, and they did great work. So thank you very much for what you did on that day. And, and again, like I said, our condolences go out to the Hagerty family. He was a very good man. So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Agreed, and can we just include Carla Albert, who works for operations and building and grounds, and she coordinated most, if not all, of the services.
Thank you.
Can I make the motion if we adjourn with a moment of silence for Mr. Hagerty?
We'll have a moment of silence, we'll have a moment of silence after the motion to adjourn. Motion and second, all in favor? Opposed? All right, we'll have a moment of silence and the meeting will be adjourned. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. It is 6:26. We'll return at 6:35 for the work session. All right, everybody, it's 6:35. I'd like to call the work session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Krasnowski. Scavitch. Ms. McDermott. Mr. Perry. Mr. Savatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
All present?
All right, thank you. Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
Just one if I could, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Just one addition, could, you need about five minutes to update the council on our strategic initiatives committee meeting last week.
Yeah, sure. Can we add it to, we want it to be added as number nine? Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you, sir.
All right. Do I need a second or anything on that for the work session? No? Okay, all right, second, all in favor? Opposed? All right, number nine's added as an update about strategic initiatives. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? All right, agenda's adopted. First, we'll have the DA's annual report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I have, it's just a brief update. I'll try to cover both the operations and the finances from the 2023 fiscal year. Consistent with the report given last year regarding the 2022 fiscal year, unfortunately, we continue to see more experienced officers retiring from service throughout the county. With the average experience in local departments decreasing, our detectives are playing a larger role in more, more types of investigations and more frequent investigations. We're doing our best to mentor the less experienced, lesser experienced detectives in the local departments so that they can handle increasingly complex investigations. Some of the different divisions in our office, some updates. We have the youth aid panel back up and running. I'm happy to report that the 2023 statistics show we had 63 youth aid panel cases completed and the juveniles' records expunged. 25 cases have been completed. They're currently in the process of expungement. Nearly $2,000 was collected for restitution for victims. Most of the cases we found were marijuana-related or related to fighting in our schools, unfortunately. The ages of the participants are evenly split between the ranges of 11 to 14 years old and 15 to 18 years old. Our office is intimately involved with the Children's Advocacy Center. As you know, it's a nonprofit organization that provides services to abused children and their families. In 2023, 528 children disclosed some form of abuse. Compared to 2022, we saw 473 referrals. So those numbers have increased. Reports by the age of victims, 107 children under six years old, 205 children from seven to 12, and 216 children from 13 to 17. 432 children were determined to need medical, a medical examination to ensure their well-being as a result of abuse. Child line referrals, which you're probably all familiar with. There's a hotline to call when you suspect abuse of a child. In 2023, our offices, our office fielded, excuse me, 3,065 child line reports. That's compared to 2022, which saw 2,434 reports. That's an increase of 25%. Our office has a division that investigates cyber tips. We have three detectives, which are part of only six detectives in the entire county that handle these types of cases. We received 199 tips in 2023 compared to 167 in 2022. We executed 48 search warrants. We had 31 arrests for child exploitation. We rescued nine children. We had 61 forensic examinations of computers and other digital evidence. And our detectives presented 13 times throughout the county to over 1,200 residents. The largest part, of course, of what we do is our prosecutorial division. At the end of 2023, we had handled 3,749 adult cases that were filed and held over to court from central court to the Court of Common Pleas. That does not include 430 juvenile cases. That's a total of 4,179 cases. This does not include the cases that were resolved or heard and dismissed at the preliminary hearing, summary offense filings, or cases diverted to the Law Enforcement Treatment Initiative program. So basically, any case that didn't make it all the way to the Court of Common Pleas, they're not included in those statistics. In 2023, the defense attorneys called the following totals for jury trials. In Judge Lupus's courtroom, 879. Judge Sklarowski's courtroom, 618. And Judge Vog's courtroom, 1,479. That's a total of 2,976 cases. Additionally, the following were called for bench trials, 31 cases for Judge Lupus, 44 for Judge Sklarowski, and 102 for President Judge Vog. In perspective, 3,153 of 3,749 adult cases were initially called for trial instead of plea. That's 84%. As far as actual trials held, our office prosecuted 53 jury and bench trials in 2023. Homicide numbers are as follows. Homicide that were in the criminal courts in 2023, we had three, excuse me, 33 cases. The homicides that were filed in 2023, regardless of when they occurred, but the arrests were made, we had 22. And the homicides that were resolved in 2023, we had 16. Three additional of those homicides that were filed in 2023 were scheduled or resolved by plea or trial this year. In the finance department, obviously, our office, unfortunately for the county, is not meant to be a profit generating division. However, we have found some ways to creatively increase revenue. The fact of the matter is everything costs more, so that we have increased some of our fees and added some fees that are applicable under the statute to attempt to divert some of the costs of prosecution away from the innocent residents of Luzern County and more towards the people accused and convicted of committing offenses. ARD, subpoena copies, right-to-no fees, and requests under the CREA Statute, Criminal History Records Information Act, are some of the ways we have done that. Additionally, we are, we have been attempting to start a central processing center. Everyone arrested will be brought to the same center and processed, taking their picture and fingerprints. We have gone to the court and we've had our plan approved by PCCD, and the courts have approved a $300 fee to be added to court costs for that purpose. I'm sure you are all familiar that, you know, we operate under a number of grants. Those are Rights and Services Act, Victims Offender of Juvenile, Victims of Juvenile Offenders Act, the Gun Violence Prosecution Initiative. We've added the Gun Violence Reduction Grant in 2023. The Stop Violence Against Women Grant. The Community Traffic Safety Program Grant, which covers checkpoints for DUI and other affected driving offenses. The Police Traffic Services Grant, which also allows us to perform checkpoints throughout the county. Our Auto Theft Task Force, which employs one officer who works for the office and works exclusively on auto theft. The mental health, mental health grant, and also a grant that employs our youth aid panel coordinator. In 2023, we had budgeted for wages and benefits $4,006, excuse me, $4,669,000 and expended only $4.3 million. Unfortunately, I wish that I could tell you that was due to fiscal responsibility. Unfortunately, it was due to vacancies in the office. All of our other expenses, we had budgeted $1,058,381 and had expended $1,102,400. So overall, we were well under budget for wages and expenses. Our current personnel status, unfortunately, we saw 14 employees leave in 2023 and eight were hired. We currently have 16 vacancies in the office. They're spread throughout the detectives, lawyers, and staff. We have been making some progress in hiring assistant DAs. Thankfully, we just recently hired one part-time, and we have interviewed for a second. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to fill some of our seven currently vacant lawyer positions. In our detective division, naturally, we're seeing a nationwide shortage of police and a drop in applications. We've been working with the county manager and have been successful. We have amended the union contract to include a sergeant's position. We were able to promote three of our longtime detectives to sergeants who'd have different managerial responsibilities throughout their office. That will help retain a number of our staff. You may be aware, the starting salary for patrolmen throughout the county has drastically increased because of the near impossibility of hiring police. Starting salary is in the range of $65,000 pretty much throughout the county. Just briefly, I'll cover some of our future plans. We've been talking for some time about starting an emergency services unit, which will be basically a SWAT team along with some other forensics that are badly needed throughout the county, accident reconstruction, crime scene mapping, and the like. We are, we have been awaiting for quite some time the Burn Memorial Justice Grant, which we had been awarded. We just haven't seemed to get the money for it. It's $2.5 million that's going to go to funding those resources. Our Gun Violence Reduction Grant, we were able to add a part-time position. So we have another detective. Everyone's seeing the increase in gun violence. Not just shootings that result in injuries to people, but also we're now seeing an increase in the production of ghost guns, which is pretty frightening throughout the county. And also, an increase in straw purchases, where someone legally allowed to buy a firearm goes to a gun shop and buys a number of guns with the intent of transferring those guns to someone who is not allowed to have firearms. So we now have two detectives working full-time on those cases. As you all know, we're still waiting on our opioid settlement funds. Our office has a number of plans. We had, two years ago, sent a memo to Manager Robertson that we have been working with drug and alcohol to put a plan together for the expenditure of those funds. Most recently, we have been working with Manager Crocamo, who has been very supportive in our efforts. I believe that we're another step forward into forming the advisory committee and hopefully formed with a full plan to expend those funds to fight the opioid epidemic in our county. One of the major initiatives that we are currently working on, I mentioned a little bit earlier, the central processing center, the $300 fee is going to fund that. So we've been working with the courts and the manager to get that up and running. And finally, the school outreach officers, one of the things I would like to spend opioid money on. We used to, years ago, have a dare program throughout Luzern County where an officer would be placed in the schools. I'd like to use that money to restart a version of that program. The idea being to get speakers to reach out to the children at some point before they decide to experiment with alcohol and drugs. It seems to us, once you get into later years in high school, it might be a little bit too late to try to talk to our youth. So those are just some of the plans we have going forward. The final thing that I would like to address is the Home Rule Charter. I want to commend the council for voting to put the study commission on the ballot. Without going into excruciating detail, I think everyone that's had any experience in the county knows we have some major constitutional and other conflicts with state law issues with our Home Rule Charter. So I just hope everyone gets out there to support correcting the charter we have. You know, I'm in favor of keeping the home rule form of government, but correcting the issues that we have. So I hope council will support a vote yes on the study commission so that we can have a group of individuals throughout the county take a look at these problems and work to correct them. correct them. Happy to take any questions, if you have any. And otherwise, that will conclude my report on fiscal year 2023.
Any questions? Ms. Smith?
Sam, do other counties have SWAT teams?
Yes.
What other counties?
Yes.
What ones?
So Lackawanna County has ones, the city of Scranton specifically, Montgomery, Delaware, obviously Philadelphia and Allegheny. I'd be lying if I said I knew all 60-some counties, whether or not they had SWAT teams. But some are countywide, and some are relegated to their major cities. So Allentown, for example, has its own SWAT team, and they will respond to surrounding communities as well, if they have a call-out for, for example, a barricaded gunman.
Right, yes. That's what a SWAT team would be for. But why now, in the 200, 300 years of the district attorney's office, why now do we need a SWAT team?
Why now? Well, historically, we have always had a SWAT team. The city of Wilkes-Barre has had a SWAT team. The city of Hazleton has had a SWAT team. And it seems now that the problem with, well, one of the problems is the expense and the training, the tax on having a single city and its officers do the full-time training for how infrequently they're needed, thank God, is one problem, whereas a countywide team would respond throughout the county. And number two, the share of expenses countywide, number one, with a $2.5 million grant, would take care of a lot of the overhead, the rifles, the gear, vehicles, things like that. Number two, the more counties that participate, obviously, it dispenses the cost throughout more municipalities. So for example, if you buy into our emergency services unit, even though in the month of April, May, and June, you may not need a SWAT team, you might have two fatal accidents where you need a reconstruction. And there aren't too many reconstructions, if any, left besides the state police. And a question I frequently get, well then, why not just rely solely on the state police? We have had multiple barricaded gunmen already. It happens more frequently than I care to admit, where the state police are already committed, because they cover something like 11 or 12 counties. It might even be more than that. So they're already committed. In fact, the one we had in Luzerne, they were out at a location in Dingman's Ferry. And a barricaded gunman, especially with a hostage, is a volatile situation that you don't have too much time to spare. So there have been multiple occasions where, in fact, they've been asking us more likely to get this up and running, because we're badly needed to respond, not only to our county, but of course, we would respond to other places if, you know, life and limb required it.
Might it be more feasible or fiscally responsible to possibly reach out to surrounding counties and create an inter-county SWAT team and share the costs and the burdens of the costs with those counties?
So there are logistical issues with doing that. Number one, like I said, Scranton already has one up and running. The issue with SWAT personnel is they need to consistently train together. You need to know each other very well and your tactics and techniques because of all the split-second decisions that are required to be made. So that's one issue. To intermingle or co-mingle the person from two different counties is a little more difficult. So the plan for our SWAT team would be that Wilkes-Barre and Hazleton are the primary personnel involved. They currently have SWAT teams, although Wilkes-Barre is presently inactive, but they will train together so that they're interchangeable personnel. Hazleton would take the lead on the southern end responses, and Wilkes-Barre would take middle north. But any personnel can step in at any time, because all of their training will be together. That's obviously more difficult to coordinate with a different county that has their own, you know, court scheduling and different types of scheduling issues in their departments and throughout their county. They have different policies and procedures as well. So it's somewhat of a jurisdictional issue and also a logistical issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Haas?
Mr. Haas? Hi. Do we have any reports of any human trafficking here in Luzerne County? We've been getting reports of child trafficking, illegal immigration tracking. We have the flights at the Evoque Airport in 2021 on Christmas. Can you reassure the public this is not happening?
I cannot. I wish I could tell you it wasn't happening, but I think the public perception of what human trafficking is is a lot different than what it is in reality. What we've been learning, so that obviously, we're learning every day, you know, the different facets of human trafficking. The current problem in defining these cases is, you know, I think when we think about human trafficking, it's somebody with a gun to their head or something like that. More frequently, what we see is someone that has been taken away from their family, usually from a foreign country, of course. And those situations are where the person is psychologically abused, almost to the point of a Stockholm syndrome, where they, you know, now believe that their captors are their friends, or are getting the type of psychological threats that, you know, if you tell anyone, if you don't work for us, if you don't do, whether it's delivering drugs or sex acts, if you don't do that, we're gonna, you know, then bring your sister in or kill your mother back in her home country. So even in the cases we've found, which thankfully, you know, we haven't found that many, but I can't say they don't exist. You know, you're talking about maybe 10 in 2023. Even if you find out it's happening, it's very difficult to get the victim to testify on your behalf or even cooperate and tell the police what's really happening. So they're very labor and time-intensive, and the definition of human trafficking is constantly changing.
No, thanks for that little mini-report. Appreciate that. Fighting the opioid crisis, you mentioned that coming up. You know, we got a big settlement here in Luzerne County. Mr. Lombardo's on the committee. I'm sure you're going to be all hands on deck with how we can best appropriate those funds to, you know, try to get this out of our community. I don't know, any basic thoughts out there that you have for the council?
Sure. And I actually, I'll circulate the memorandum. I had done one to Manager Robertson at that time, and we did a joint memo that we came together with Wyoming Valley Drug and Alcohol and a number of the people that would be hopefully participating to set forth a plan. But a few of the things are, you know, I'd like to bring on two more opioid detectives that concentrate on not just drug trafficking cases. Obviously, that's a big part of it. But we coordinate with the Attorney General's Office, who has a task force that investigate doctors that over-prescribe or wrongfully prescribe. But the biggest thing that's developed in the last few years are the cases dubbed "drug delivery resulting in death." Definition of that crime has changed. Previously, you basically had to show ill intent. Basically, you gave them drugs that you knew would kill them. And the courts have come down with opinions now that say heroin and fentanyl are so destructive and so deadly that merely by the fact that you've delivered it, you should know that that is likely to kill someone. So, you know, without getting into the details of why they're difficult cases, we're now able to more successfully prosecute and at least arrest for drug delivery resulting in death. The problem is, again, they're basically homicide cases. So you're now taking that detective completely off the street for a pretty lengthy period of time. You're talking about months-long investigating, tracing the source of the drugs. And obviously, the dealer of that particular dose that killed someone, you know, he didn't create that dose. So you're trying to go up the chain to figure out where these drugs originated. And we're finding more and more, of course, it's coming, you know, from China through Mexico. So adding two detectives would be one thing, but again, you can't arrest your way out of the problem. So the idea to bring in the resources for people that are trained in this area to effectively speak to our younger students and educate them on the dangers of experimenting with drugs and alcohol is another idea for expenditure of this money. And I think many people don't know, looking at the county as a whole, we have 12 school districts. Each of those school districts has at least three buildings. So speaking to children that are in fourth, fifth, sixth grade, seventh grade, could be a full-time job for two people very easily every school day of the year. So those are just two ideas. And I know Ryan Hogan's from Wyoming Valley Drug and Alcohol, you know, has a number of ideas as well. You know, the MAT program at the prison, making sure that we're medicating the inmates that come in, so they can get methadone if necessary or just be diagnosed with whatever they might need is another part of the program. So I know I don't want to take up your whole night. I could probably talk for another hour.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. And you're working, of course, in tandem with federal officials. I know years ago, we had the, someone from the Philadelphia Circuit really come out. When Stephanie was still here, I'm sure that's still happening.
Oh, yeah. So we're very close with the Scranton office of the FBI, both their investigators and the U.S. attorneys. In fact, we have a lawyer cross-designated with their office. We have one of our detectives cross-deputized with the FBI. We work with them very closely all the time. And in fact, we've been putting together seminars on human trafficking, because the, you know, the Philadelphia Division is a lot more experienced than the surrounding areas. So we bring them in to train all local law enforcement on recognizing human trafficking as well.
Thank you for that. And last question, I promise, sorry to monopolize you. Our strategic initiative met. We're looking at, how can we help fill your vacancies at the council funding level? Are you using interns? Are you partnering with local universities to help keep some, incentivize some people working for the office?
So that's a good question. We've been, and this is a statewide problem. Our statewide conferences, we've been, you know, brainstorming different ideas. And I've discussed this with Manager Crocomo, who's been very supportive. The use of interns is a good one. In fact, even paid internships. I know we did away with them years ago, but I think it might be time to start bringing them back, especially we can get certified law students that are third-year students, basically ready to graduate, and they can start in court doing certain types of hearings, which I think is a great way to get them involved, and then with the hopes that they stay into the future. So I think that's one way. We're also, in fact, as we speak right now, my first assistant and another assistant DA are down at Villanova. They're alma mater. It's a recruiting day down there, so we've been visiting the law schools personally, trying to bring them in. But I would be happy to talk to you on the side about, you know, how we can work together to fill those vacancies. As I said, we're currently at, we're missing 25% of our lawyers, which, as you can imagine, has been a real hindrance on getting cases prepared for trial. And I know that it frustrates the courts as well, because, you know, the fewer people we have, the higher the caseloads are, the more stressed out they are. That sometimes causes people to leave, which then exacerbates the problem, because those cases get spread among the remaining lawyers. And I know it's not just our office, but the public defenders that are facing the same issues.
Sam, that'd be great. Thanks for the time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I, you mentioned the opioid settlement. And just briefly, I know we have a really good drug court program, and I'm very proud of it, and we all should be very proud of it. Do you have any numbers at your fingertips on successful graduations from the drug court or admissions into drug court?
I don't think I have the drug court.
Or give us a little explanation of what drug court is, in case people don't know?
Sure. So the Drug Treatment Court program, in fact, we just had a graduation two weeks ago, is a diversionary program where if the panel, if you apply for the panel, and the panel determines that you are eligible, and by eligible, I mean, number one, suffering from a substance use disorder, but also not a trafficker and not trying to claim the program in order to get out of the criminal penalties associated with the crime, then they put you through a pretty rigorous period of probation. And if you succeed in completing the program, then your charges are dismissed, expunged. And it's met with, I want to say it's over an 80% success rate. I'm not exactly sure of the numbers of applicants, but we've been working to expand the number of people that are eligible. As you all can imagine, well, when we first started, anyone charged with a trafficking offense was ineligible. Naturally, throughout the course of the program, we learned that a lot of people are only selling to feed their addiction, and they're not true profit-making traffickers. So we try to weed out which ones might be eligible, because they're feeding an addiction. And if we can do that, you know, we'll try to admit them to the program. And also, certain other offenses, which used to be ineligible, DUI, for example, well, if your DUI results from your substance use disorder, you know, we're working on expanding some parameters that will get more people that actually need the help into the program.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your time. All right. Next up, we have Controller Griffith with his annual report.
Good evening, council. I introduce my deputy controller, Tom Sacola. He's my deputy controller who works in my office to try and keep things moving along and helping out where we need to help out on the administrative side where we can. Very happy to have him on my staff. He's been a great asset for the department, so I do want to welcome him to the meeting. I know he was here at our last one, but I'll introduce him again. I did send this report to council earlier, like on a Friday, so we all had a chance to look at it. So in the interest of time, I'm not going to spend an awful lot of time on the report. I'll highlight some of the things, and then I'll open it up for questions to try and save a little bit of time, because I know you have a full agenda with the DA and myself at the same time. The second page, obviously, the very second page is, one of the things that I want to point out is, the honor that I have to serve the people as the county controller is very, very important to me. I think the county controller's position is incredibly important in this county. Because we are home rule and because we have no oversight, independent oversight, the controller's position is critical. So it's a real honor to serve the people in this capacity, as well as work with the administration and council on duties that are important to you folks as well. I've had the joy of being able to work with the administration under Ms. Crocomo for the last couple of months, or, well, since last May. And it's been refreshing to be able to work with someone that wants to get the input from the controller and have me assist in any way possible to try and make things happen in a positive way and to move the county in a forward direction. So that's been very, very helpful for my office. It takes the stress level down. It takes the ability to do audits up, because the productivity can be up, because we don't have the stress or the delay in getting information. So all of that stuff is very, very important. It works behind the scenes, that a lot of people don't recognize how important that is. So I want to point that out. On the next page, where you see the controller staff, it's on page three for Manny. I know he's trying to keep up with me, and I apologize for not telling him. There's a new employee I just recently hired, which was that Eileen Adams, who's on the list. And I appreciate the council's consideration for giving me the extra money to do that. I did bring that to the work session a couple of weeks ago, and I appreciate the consideration of council to allow me to get another staff member, because hiring people at the salary that we were allocated was very, very difficult. And we absolutely have a very skeleton staff, as you can see. There's like four people plus myself in the department. Makes it really difficult to get a lot of the work done. We'll move on to page seven, if you follow along. The other pages, I know you probably all had a chance to look at. The teamwork with county council I just alluded to, and the importance of that. You'll see that the county controller's responsibilities are to identify and to try and help the management to understand what the problems might be and things that are working or aren't working. And that's the duty of the controller to help with council as well. I know some members of council have come into my office to see me about information, and that's very helpful. My office is always open to anyone who needs to come in. And if you have any questions, I'm there for you. Just call, stop in anytime. I'm more than happy to help any way I can. And the information that I share with county council is helpful, because you guys are the legislative arm of the county. And if things need to be corrected, they can be corrected legislatively. It's important that council knows what those problems are, so you can act appropriately, either by ordinance or resolution or motion or whatever your council needs to do. On the next page, which is the 2324 spending summary, you'll see that the controller's office was under budget by $14,827.57. We cut back on some of the, obviously, it's not a whole lot of money, but it's under budget just the same. We did not spend a lot of money in our legal department this year, which we did in the past, so we were able to save some money there. We saved the $2,000 in legal costs, because I didn't have to get an outside attorney, because we do have the cooperation from the manager, which, when I had the other manager, I had to spend some of that money. So as you can recognize, how important it is for the cooperation part of it. And the next page, it talks about the controller budget comparison. That's just a recap of the previous page on the, the controller doesn't bring in any revenue. We're seriously thinking about when we do audits of maybe outside entities, if we could charge a fee for that for some folks, we might be able to do that. But I don't know how much we can do that. I have to check with the Office of Law to find out if that's a possibility. For like tax collectors and things like that, we do do the audits for those. But we don't look at the municipal side. So we're thinking, as long as we're there, if we could do the municipal side and get some revenue from the municipalities for doing it, that might be helpful. But that's, it's in its thought process to see if we can do that. If you look at the 2023 audit review page, you'll see that we completed 26 county tax collector audits, some of which have never been audited in the past. When we came in, when I came into the office in '22, we found several tax collectors that were never audited in the past 10, 12 years, which was really, really important, that we looked at them first. And one of the things that we find when we do audits is, as Tom Sacola says, it's the halo effect of audits. It's not necessarily we're in there auditing to find things wrong. It's not necessarily we're in there auditing to find things wrong, it's the fact that they know that we're looking. That's, that's the important part. The county needs to make sure that people understand that it's our money, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that they're doing their job correctly, we're getting the right amount of money collected, and they're following the proper procedures and policies that the county has outlined. And that's part of the audit that we do when we do tax collectors. We have 69 or 70 tax collectors in the county. They're all independent elected officials by the municipality, so it's really very important that we look at our county funding to make sure we're getting the proper funding. They have the proper documentation. Some of them haven't, we found some that didn't do their certifications, and we found some that didn't have their proper, uh, not their proper bonding, but they didn't have proper, uh, they had, what was the other thing? They had, not their certification, they didn't have proper certification was one of them. So we, we identified that, and they just make the, it's just the idea that when you identify it, they correct it, and it's good, because that's, some of them just don't know they're supposed to have it. So when we do those kind of things, it comes out very important. I highlighted, there's three on that page for your, uh, most important ones that we looked at, as obviously we heard from Ms. Williams about the campaign finance report. That was a collaborative effort with the manager. That was not just a controller idea. That was a manager idea who said, "If you think that's important, go ahead and do it, and I'll give you all the support I can." It took a lot of work from a lot of members of the election bureau to make that happen. It wasn't just because the controller was able to do it. It takes a lot of, um, especially at the time when I did it, it was during a primary for a municipal race. So there was a lot of work involved to get those documents up on the website, collected, analyzed, make sure they were right, timely, and all of those type of things. That's not just simply a controller issue. There was a lot of staff involved from the Bureau of Elections that helped with that. So I just want to make sure that we understand that we initiated the audit, and we did all the work to get the audit completed, but we couldn't do it without the cooperation from the management, and we didn't have that before. So, uh, keep that in mind. We did the corrections division for the commissary fund and inmate welfare account. We've done that for years and years and years in this county. One of the things that we identified from Mr. Thornton's, uh, point about not getting interest on bank accounts, we found out that we have a huge amount of money in the commissary fund that we're not getting interest on. So because of his suggestion, we looked at all of the bank accounts, and we found that we could recoup a lot of revenue that we were missing, especially in this environment that we're currently in, where the interest rates are high. Back in the day when the interest rates were low, it really wasn't that big of a deal. But now, we could get 4% on a, on an account that has a half a million dollars in it. That's substantial money that we're leaving on the table. So to Mr. Thornton's point, when he raised it about the ARPA money, we took that whole audit process forward, and we made sure that we got all the bank accounts that can be interest-bearing to make them. So I contacted the warden, and the warden and the controller worked hand in hand with the bank, and they were cooperative enough to give us interest on those, on those monies. It's a half a million dollars that we're now getting interest on that we weren't getting before. So a lot of cooperation goes to most of the stuff that we do, but, you know, somebody comes and says they have an issue or a question, uh, the controller's office looks into it pretty quickly, and if we can fix it, we go to the manager and we work hand in hand to get fixed or corrected. There was a comment made in the public comments section about the Office of Law. That comment came to the controller's office probably last August, September, I guess. Uh, Ms. Williams brought that question to me as a controller, and I immediately reached out to manager Crocamo, and she reached out to Mr. Skiing, and we're working on that to get those right-to-no requests up. The controller can't do that, because they are legal. Some of that stuff is legal documents. Sensitive stuff has to be redacted. Sometimes, you know, you certainly don't want to leave the controller just putting stuff up online, like I did with the campaign finance reports on a right-to-no request that comes into the Office of Law, because there are some pretty sensitive documents that we got to be careful with, and we don't want to leave ourselves open for a, for an issue where we post somebody's social security numbers or any of that kind of stuff by accident. So that's why there's kind of a delay in getting that done, because the Office of Law doesn't have a plethora of secretaries. She, he has one. And he's got a real hard task of keeping, she's a lot to do for Mackenzie. So for her to stand up there and now do this is difficult. So it's, they're working on it. The management is working on it, and we're working with them where we can to get that accomplished. So I just wanted to address that to, to Ms. Williams's point, that we didn't forget about it. It's just something that takes a lot of time, because we're kind of understaffed in the Office of Law. Uh, we did do the commissary, uh, compensatory time payout policy, uh, in personnel policy. If we remember a couple, I think it was last year, where we had the huge budget transfer by manager, it might have been the year before, uh, for the, uh, compensatory time for an employee. And we did an audit of the personnel policy and how the compensatory time payout policy was being followed or not, and we corrected a lot of the problems that were being, uh, accomplished in that area as well. Uh, I'm going to let Tom talk on the next, uh, he has a couple audits that he has to talk about. Uh, on the next page, we're talking about the seven county magistrate courts. Tom, can you take those over?
Great. Thanks, Walter. Let me just take a second and say, it's really been a privilege, uh, to work with Walter this past year. Uh, his work effort, his knowledge, and especially his passion has been unmet probably anywhere in the state. So I know he has a lot of passion. I appreciate that passion, as long as it gets us to the right place. Uh, so I'll just mention a few things, uh, that we worked on. Specifically, uh, we did a number of audits on the magistrate districts. Uh, one of the issues we found is that checks that we issue, uh, for refunds, uh, don't always get cashed. It'd be great if we could keep those funds for ourselves, but they're actually property of the state. Those funds were turned over to the county. What we found is that we never did, uh, file them with the unclaimed Funds Department of the PA Treasury. So we're working with the courts, running reports for the last number of years, so that we can be in compliance. We've talked to the state. Uh, there's no interest or penalties. There's an agreement that we're in. And we'll file those. So we feel good about that. It's cleaning up an issue that we had in the past, and then we'll get it in our annual SGT fund audit. Uh, a couple of other things I just mentioned. One of the things in the controller's office that we were able to do this past year is Walter contacted LCC. What a great resource we have in the county. Uh, we were able to take Excel and Word classes online. Terrifically done. I strongly encourage all of our, uh, division heads to do something similar to that. Been very helpful to our staff, and we got certified. Feels good to do something as a team. One of the other, uh, things I'll just mention is that, uh, with the district justices, you may know we had one issue within the county, so we're taking a different approach. We're doing a lot of onsite review of the internal control of the magistrate offices. And we find that separation of duties, internal controls, a lot easier to spot than just looking at reports in our offices. So there's just a few things that I'll mention. I'll turn it back to Walter. Uh, we think we've got a lot of good things happening, a lot of, uh, improvements to what we do within the county and in the controller's report. So, uh, thank you, Walter. Thanks for the opportunity to say a few things.
Yep. And, and to Tom's point, the, uh, ability to work and my passion, he's, he's my, he's my rock, for lack of a better term. When Walter goes off the rails, Tom's the guy who pulls me back in. Well, he's the one that says, "Come on, Walter, get back in the rails." So, so he's, 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 he's kind of the guy that does that for me, and I'll tell you, we, we all need to have that, because especially with somebody with the passion that gets really excited about stuff, you got to have somebody who can stop and say, "Focus. Don't get excited." Um, the other one, Tom, was, uh, the other ones that we did were the Act 13 Marcella Shale Audit is on the one page. Uh, Mr. Thornton's the chairman of that committee as well. That was very revealing, some of the monies that we gave out over the years for projects. We haven't really kept a good close eye on that kind of stuff, so we did an audit of that, and we found a lot of these projects that were issued monies through municipalities and all these other places, that we really didn't do any back, no, any research to see if they actually used it for what we gave them the money for. So I see councils going out on these ARPA funds. That's really a good thing. I just saw Mr. Wolowitz and a couple other members of council at the lands in, and taking a look and making sure that the ARPA money's being used for the intention that council gave it to them for. Kudos to council for doing that. That's really, really important, because we, we need to see what that money's doing for the community. We allocated an awful lot of money out, a hundred and some million that we allocated out. It's important that we know that the people are using it for good, for the county, and they're, and we're getting something out of it. We did do a fuel distribution audit, uh, last year for the fuel distribution. We, we received a call from somebody that said they thought that the fuel was being put in private vehicles. So the controller's office obviously went out and did an audit. That wasn't happening. But we did find that there were some controls, some policy and procedure problems that went on. We found out that the, 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 the control mechanism on the fuel pump could be tightened up, so we make sure that that doesn't happen, or we have no problems with people putting in the wrong milages and, and vehicles are being properly used. We had vehicles that were sitting for six or seven months. They didn't even know they weren't even being used, because nobody was looking at the fuel logs. If you see a vehicle's not getting fuel for a couple of weeks, there's obviously a problem. They don't need that vehicle. You can allocate it to another department. So that's kind of the finding that we found in that, uh, that audit, which was very helpful for the manager. The manager didn't even have a list of the vehicles we had in the county before we did that audit. So we were able to tighten that all up for the, for the manager. And, um, let me see if there's anything else that I wanted to just highlight for, uh, I talked about the bank accounts for interest-bearing. We did the audit of 60, 60 or 65 bank accounts to make sure we were getting interest on them. The ones that we weren't getting interest on it, we told the manager in Budget and Finance, and they reached out to the banks, and the banks, uh, put the accounts in interest-bearing accounts if they could. So that's, that's good. And the last, I think the last thing I need to just talk about that we did last year and we're currently working on is the payroll conversion and the time in attendance, which is a huge, huge task for Budget and Finance, HR and the controller's office. Get that payroll system up and running, so we don't have ADP, and we don't have, um, the chrono system is a huge step in a positive direction to save the county an awful lot of money. I mean, we're paying software licenses, I think about a hundred and some thousand dollars extra for three different systems to do payroll, and the manager recommended that we fix that, and it's been an ongoing process, and the payroll part's almost done, but we're in the time in attendance now. So it is a huge, it's an awful lot of work for a lot of staff members, but the return on that work is going to be huge. When we figure out how easy it's going to be when you onboard and offboard employees for benefits, payroll, and all of those things, because we do have a, a pretty robust revolving door in the county, changing staff. And at any given month, you may get 20 people coming in and out. That's a lot of work for HR to onboard and offboard people. And when you're working with three payroll systems and time clock systems, it's quite the task. So that was my review for 2023, and just briefly on the '24 upcoming one. Um, we're, we're looking at the remaining nine magistrate district judges. We're going to finish those up. At the recommendation of council, they want us to stay with that, and we're going to continue with that to get those cleaned up and make sure that we get all the audits done of those. We have some more tax collectors to get finished up this year, so we would be able to hit all 70 tax collectors in the time that I'm in the controller's office this, this year. Hopefully, we'll finish it this year. And we'll have all the tax collectors completed, and then we'll start back and, and review the ones that we did already to make sure they're complying. Uh, the, we're working on the current county purchasing policy at the request of the manager. We're trying to revise the purchasing policy and clean up some of the language and make sure that departments are aware of what the policies and procedures are to purchase things. Over the years, it's morphed into a place where departments are just arbitrarily buying things and running it through purchasing, but they really don't know why the policy or what they're doing. So we're trying to clean that all up with purchasing and the management, and if we can clean that up and make it a more cohesive document, so instead of 81 pages of redundancy, make it maybe 40 pages of actual policy and procedure you must follow in order to purchase something in the county. It would be a big help to keep control of the cost and contracts. I think contracts is our biggest issue in the county. All too often, we see contracts that are made, and they have automatic renewals in them. The managers now have decided not to do automatic renewals, which is really great, because at the time, most of the contracts we're reviewing, there's automatic renewals in there, and the vendor just automatically gets the renewal. Council never knows it's been renewed. The manager never knows it's been renewed. It's in the contract that after one year, you get an additional year, and there doesn't seem to be any communication that says such and such and so and so is getting the contract for another year. And that's, that's one of the problems we have in contract language in our county, is just because we put an automatic, with the option to renew, doesn't mean it automatically happens. My issue is the controller's. Council should still see those contracts, or, or at least be advised that we renewed a contract that was a $200,000 contract for somebody. Just because it's in there for an automatic renewal shouldn't circumvent the process. The council doesn't know it, and the manager doesn't know it. And so we're working on that with the management. So, um, I'm not going to spend much more time on anything else. I, I gave you a pretty quick thumbnail sketch, because I know you have a busy schedule, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer anything you have.
Any questions for Controller Griffith? Uh, Mr. Lescavage?
I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing Carl Peters on page six.
Is he on there? On page six? Yeah, okay. I got you. Barney Fife?
Any.
Got it.
Any other questions for the controller?
Just a quick statement. Uh, Walter and I have come a long way. Uh, we've been together, and, uh, Tom has been, uh, also a great, uh, assist to the management, and we look forward to continuing that. I want to follow up with Tom about, uh, the community college. We went for a tour yesterday. Uh, I don't know how many council members have been on a tour of our Luzern County Community College. It is extraordinary, just absolutely impressive. And if you go on a Monday night, uh, the culinary.
Secret room.
No, oh, it's our secret. You, they, they served dinner, and it was wonderful, uh, but really.
Every Monday night?
Monday night, except for this Monday. I think it's a holiday, but, uh, yeah, called for reservations, and it was absolutely extraordinary. And, uh, Tom, we will, uh, take you up, uh, on the, uh, advice to get some classes there, and we are going to collaborate with the community college. We talked about interns and programs. Uh, it's just, just such a valuable resource, uh, in our county. Uh, I, I wish I really had known about the, the breadth of all the programs that they have. Uh, I do now, and we're, uh, we're going to have a very, very, uh, good partnership.
Yeah, they have a lot of online courses, and they're not very expensive, and the employees take it right in at their desk. And when they get done, they take a test, and they get certified for it, and it's fabulous. I mean, everybody, you know, we, we had Excel courses in the controller's office. Excel is really important, and they've never been trained on some of the basic stuff in Excel, because we just learned it by rote. We just do it. And I said, "There's some tricks that you might learn from the course," and I'll tell you, there's been a lot of good tricks, like copy and paste and stuff, that they had no idea that was even available, and it's, it's just basic stuff. It really was helpful in the production and the productivity of the staff. So, and it wasn't expensive. And, and, you know, we have a lot of departments that could benefit from not only that, but there's other courses that is very, very beneficial, so the college does have a good resource there, and we should, we should absolutely use that. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your opportunity to, an opportunity to give you this space.
Thank you, Controller Griffith. All right, we'll move into the agenda items. Uh, first, we have receive and discuss budget reports for February 2024. Manager Crocamo, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Roselle?
Hi. Um, thank you, Councilman Lombardo. Um, the February financial reports are included in your packet. Your first report is the budget performance report that you're used to seeing. Our revenue is at 4%, or 155,410,682, um, which is a down a little bit from where, you know, if you tried to take the budget and divide it by 12, obviously, and that's because of the timing of the tax bills. So January and February, as I mentioned previously, are slow cash collections months. Um, the bills were sent out in the middle of February. The discount period ends April 15th. So we've seen a whole lot of revenue coming in the month of March, so you'll see those cash balances as well as the revenue being increased next month. Expenses are at 12%, which is still below where we should be at 153,428.69, so about 5% under where we would normally be. The second report is a listing of budget transfers, which is a new report that was requested by Councilman Haas. So all budget transfers are prepared by the individual departments. Then they're approved by myself and the county manager, and then they're sent to all of you. So you see the actual budget transfers, along with the reason for the transfer and all of the accounts that are included. At the beginning of the year, you'll see that many of the budget transfers relate to the previous year, because the books are not closed. You know, we don't close the books until we get to, um, well, actually, we close the books the end of February, pretty much. So, um, depending on when we need to get the trial balance to our auditors, because of course, we want to make sure we capture as much in the previous year as we can that relates to the previous year. So on the list that I gave you, there are 23 budget transfers that relate to last year, or 2023, and then seven of them that relate to '24. The third report that you have is the AP report that you're all used to seeing. AP's running at about 12% so far. And finally, the treasurer's report. So at the end of February, we have 151,519,749 as our cash balance. I mean, again, you know, that's kind of low, because of, of the timing of the tax, um, bills that go out. I mean, if you see that number next time, right now, we're sitting at about $20 million in the general fund, so that number has increased dramatically. The ARPA accounts account for 60, almost $69 million of that number, 68,913,071, to be exact. The interest that we've earned in the month of February is $470,000, of which $294,000 is ARPA. Um, I also wanted to let everybody know that we pay. everybody know that we paid off the 2024 TRAN yesterday, so three months early, um, which saves the county, you know, about a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred thousand dollars based on what our, our budget was. And remember, we earned interest on that money, you know, as, as we, um, we had it. And the TRAN, again, is almost like an interns' policy. I mean, again, you can see how low the cash balances are in January and February. So we get that TRAN to make sure we get through until we start receiving the, the cash for the, um, the tax bills that are sent out. We are currently working on supplying our two thousand twenty-three audit information to the auditors. Um, you know, we have a lot of information already sent to them. They will actually be getting our final report, uh, well, our final trial balance, April first, which is Monday. And they'll be, you know, heavy into preparing the audit, which again, needs to be done by June thirtieth. And also, we're working on the indirect cost allocation, which is where we can take costs, um, and partition them out to other departments, such as human service departments, where we can recoup some of that cost, and, and, um, domestic relations, nine-one-one, things like that. Um, and of course, Walter already talked about, you know, the New World Upgrade, which has, you know, taken a lot of our time. We appreciate the partnership with the Controller's Office. Certainly could never have done it without them. Um, but I think we've, uh, come a long way. You know, I think payroll is in really good shape, and now HR is working on time in attendance. So does anyone have any questions for me about any of the reports or anything related to budget and finance?
Any questions? Mr. Haas?
Comment and question, Ms. Rozelle. Thanks for everything you do. Really impressive. And I'm glad you're where you're at. So thank you for everything. Um, the twen- a couple questions quickly, too. The 2023 TRAN, it's three-point-five million? What, I think that's encumbered, isn't it?
That's just what's left in the account.
Okay.
So when we get the TRAN, we have to set up an individual, a separate account, to transfer the money in, into, so that, you know, all the TRAN proceeds go into one account. So when we did the 2024 TRAN, for example, we set up a new fidelity account, because that, too, you know, was giving us the best rate at the time. So we don't necessarily take all the money out of that account, because again, we want to earn the highest interest rate. So we'll, you know, maneuver the money around based on what account has the lowest interest rate, and that's the money we'll transfer into either the payroll account or the operating account to pay our operating expenses and payroll.
Makes sense. Thanks for that. One, one additional one down under the, and I'm on here, the, the summary sheet of the accounts. Under the ARPA funds, fifty-six million. What is, what's the HTF? I should know that, but I, I'm wondering what that is.
Where are you at?
Under the ARPA funds, under the Pliget accounts?
You want me to look at yours?
Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, this one at the bottom. Pliget, HTF. It's for, uh, seven-hundred-and-seventy mil- seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand.
That is not an ARPA.
Right. So what, what is that exact? What's HTF offhand? I'm sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot, because I don't know either.
Um, I mean, honestly, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what HTF stands for. That account's been there forever, but I can certainly, you know, look into it, and I'll, I'll email you tomorrow with that information.
Yeah, thanks. No, no rush on that. Just curious. All right. Thanks again for everything.
Sure.
That really is something to celebrate, Mr. Lombardo, the hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings, you know, for what you, for getting the TRAN done early. That's fantastic.
It's great.
Really. It's really impressive.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Rozelle. All right. Next up, we'll have discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a renew- a renewal contract with Thomson Reuters for Westlaw Legal Research Software.
Good evening, Council. Uh, we've got a couple of resolutions to look at tonight, so we'll start with this one. So Thomson Reuters has been our service that has been providing the, uh, legal research, uh, materials for the inmates. Um, we are coming up on a contract renewal, and to, uh, Controller's point, you know, we're not looking for one-year, uh, extensions, so we went for a three-year contract. You'll see there that, um, again, a couple of things just to point out. The, um, legal research materials, which is, um, now provided through the tablets, uh, as well as in the law library. So the, the inmates have a, a fair amount of access to any legal research that they need, which is a requirement, um, with Title Thirty-seven and Chapter Ninety-five, uh, dot two thirty-six. Uh, it does say in Chapter Ninety-five of Title Thirty-seven, it's kind of to the ward's discretion of how much, but I feel like this is important. It's important for a lot of reasons, so I'm recommending the approval of this contract with, uh, with Thomson Reuters. And just to point out that these services are funded through the inmate welfare fund and are not coming from the general fund. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. If you'd like to move on to number three, the discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute...
Chairman?
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. Ms. Smith?
And just to be clear, it is statutorily required that we allow, um, inmates to have access to legal research.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Just to be clear.
Yeah. It's not an option. It is just a best option, because you don't want a lot of movement. So the less movement in the facility, the better for security purposes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Um, number three, discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with Reassur- Reassurance Solutions for the purchase of technology for the monitoring of inmate vital signs.
Yes. So these two follow, this Reassurance Solutions and Valera are the checks in regard to the PCCD grant that was just approved in the budget amendment. And, um, as I had explained probably last meeting, Reassurance Solutions, these are the sensors that are going to be utilized for, um, I, I guess, for lack of better words, the higher-risk type inmates. There's, there's a small population. We feel like, uh, in regards to being able to monitor them better, uh, more efficiently, it doesn't take the place of any kind of work by the corrections officers. It enhances the work for the security, safety, and of course, the liability. And so, uh, this contract is for, like I said, for sixteen units for the installation and the, uh, purchase.
All right. Uh, any questions? All right. Moving on to number four, discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute a contract with Valera for air purification units.
Again, uh, under the PCCD grant, these are the air and surface units that are going to be utilized in both the main facility and the minimal offender unit, uh, to, again, neutralize contaminants in the air, uh, part of that COVID mitigation grant, again, for the purchase of the equipment and the installation, um, which we hope to have done fairly quickly. So...
Any questions on that? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilber.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute a renewal contract with Susquehanna Software Incorporated for the CPR Web Mental Health and Developmental Services Billing Software Environment, Susquehanna Software Contract.
Hi. Um, about a year ago, we went with a new billing software. We went from EasyCap to CPR Web at a savings of approximately sixty-five thousand a year. Our new program is actually used by seventy-seven percent of Pennsylvania counties, so it is in line with all regulations, and they're able to, um, modify the system to ensure that we are following all regulations. Um, as we, our current contract will end June thirtieth of 2024. However, we were given an opportunity, if we lock in a, now, this is just for maintenance and support, they'll lock it in at only four hundred a year additional, so that, at a cost savings, um, of sixty-six percent. So if we lock it in for a five-year contract, it only goes up each year by four hundred. If we can take, you know, roll the dice and see what they would offer us each year, but typically, it's much more than four hundred increase each year. We're definitely going to be continuing with the software for more than five years, so going with the maintenance and support would be fiscally responsible.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Number six, discussion regarding resolution approving an extension of the lease with Kings College for parking at River Street between West Jackson and North Streets, uh, for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Skeen.
I can handle that one. So we have a, for a long time now, we've had a lease with Kings to rent that upper parking space by the annex, and that lease ended in December. So the lease was changed. We've increased the lease. It was usually done for five-year terms, but we did it for two years, because we were going to do the study of our properties, and we just wanted to make sure we didn't need that property for anything else. And then they would extend, or we'd give a new lease to them after that two years.
We all made a new lease.
That is correct. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Skeen. Next up, we have, we have election update. Ms. Cook?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? So, uh, I know Council requested a, just a brief update of what the Bureau has been doing for the last several weeks. Uh, we do have an election coming up on April twenty-third. In case you hadn't heard, uh, the primary election will be April twenty-third. Uh, so we are officially twenty-eight days until Election Day. Uh, we, uh, I sat down with the, the staff in our office today so that we could go over some of what the Bureau has been working on. Um, yesterday, we began our logic and accuracy testing, and I'd like to thank Chair Lombardo, Ms. McDermott, Mr. Sabatino, and Mr. Rilovich for joining us yesterday, um, to get a, a brief demonstration on what our, our logic and accuracy testing looks like. Uh, as of the end of the day today, we have one-hundred-and-sixty-eight ballot marking devices that have been programmed and tested. Um, we have also been working on repairing general maintenance, um, replacing batteries, um, latches, handles on the machines. We've had this equipment since, uh, the beginning of 2020, so they do take a beating when they're in, in transit. So, um, our deputy director, uh, Mr. Hahn, has been working very diligently to make sure that all of the equipment cabinets and equipment itself has been, uh, repaired. We finished our ballot proofing. Um, samples of our ballots have been reviewed by the Department of State. Um, we have been processing voter registration and mail-in ballot applications. Our target to start mailing ballots will be the end of this week. Um, we've been working very closely with our vendor in order to ensure that we get ballots out as soon as possible. We did not receive an official candidate list until last week. Um, so that did put us back a little bit in terms of our ballot proofing and approval, but we do have the official candidate list now, and I believe all pending, uh, litigation regarding candidates on the ballot has now been resolved. Um, poll worker trainings, we did receive several requests, um, regarding adding additional trainings in the Wilkes-Barre-Penplace, uh, location for after-hours and weekends. We have been adding classes. Um, so far, we have two classes added for evenings and, uh, an additional Saturday class right before the election. Uh, that will coincide with our judges prior to Election Day. Uh, we wrapped up our trainings of the electronic poll books. Um, last week, we wrapped that up. So we are posting online versions of our training classes as well, um, that will be available to our workers, uh, to act as a, a sort of guidance for Election Day. Sometimes it, it helps to have a, a short video saying, here's exactly how you do this. Um, when you're not doing something every day, it tends to get a little confusing. So having as much access as possible for our poll workers to have everything right at their fingertips is our goal. Um, we have attended several trainings, um, regarding elections administration over the last few months. Uh, the Department of State has really been doing a, a fantastic job with providing training for new elections administrators. Uh, and the, the leadership in our department has been very active in attending those, those classes. Um, I think the only other thing is the deadline to register for, um, voting is April eighth, and the deadline to apply for a mail-in ballot is April sixteenth. So if you can make sure that your constituents are very well aware of that, it, it would help with, um, all of our efforts as well.
Any questions? Ms. Smith? Oh, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Ms. Smith, go first. Sorry.
In this, in this election, independents can vote in the primary because of the Ballot Study Commission. That's very unusual for a primary. What is this doing, or what are you doing to make sure the independents are aware that they should and need to come out to vote for this?
Sure. So we, I mean, we, we've issued several releases regarding, um, registration. Uh, every time we do any type of meeting with, uh, the, the press, we do discuss, um, the Government Study Commission, uh, which does remind me to ensure that all voters know there will be the need to scroll down for the study commission. We do have a header on the top of the screen ballots. Um, and we are including a, a sticker in every ballot marking device noting that there will be the need to scroll down for that contest. Primarily, though, the, the burden to reach out to all voters would fall to the parties or the, the candidates for that contest. Um, it, it wouldn't necessarily be the role of the Bureau to ensure voter turnout.
Have you gotten any feedback from any independents that they know that they can vote? And it wouldn't be because they're independents, they don't have parties.
Correct. Um, I haven't had much feedback, other than we've been receiving applications to vote, um, vote by mail, applications for third-party and independent voters that otherwise wouldn't have been able to receive a ballot for this election.
Do you know approximately a percentage versus the other party?
Not, not at the top of my head. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Um, I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead. Ms. McDermott, then Mr. Thornton, then Mr. Haas.
Thank you. How many mail-in ballots, uh, do you know that you have right now, or applications?
Ooh, last time I checked, it was right around twenty-one thousand. We're, I'm sure we're over that now. We have, uh, opened up overtime in our office to, uh, process mail-in ballot applications that are coming in.
And what percentage is that of the voters? Approximately? Good enough?
I don't, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I can make it...
So twenty-one thousand?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Uh, just one question. Do we have plenty of paper?
We have more than enough paper.
Thank you.
Um, we have approximately, I think we did the math, we did the math, it's approximately one-point-two-million sheets of paper currently in our warehouse, um, for the hundred-and-ninety-four and change thousand registered voters in the county. So we have, we have plenty of paper.
Thank you, Mr. Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Ms. Cook. Uh, three quick ones, myself. So the, to piggyback on Ms. McDermott's, the mail-ins are, you, you think they're going to be released, start to be sent out on Friday? You said by the end of the week.
That's our goal, is to start mailing them Friday.
I think the state says honor before the ninth, so you're, you're ahead of the game there. Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, backup plan for the poll books. How, how's that going? I know I asked that prior elections, or prior meetings, rather.
So, so for the, the year of 2024, we discussed it with the election board as well, and we are all in agreement that with issuing the new electronic poll books, and it being such a, a high-profile presidential election, we want to sort, sort of mitigate any potential, uh, issues. And we are using paper poll books as our backup for the year of 2024, and we'll be doing a reevaluation on our contingency planning, um, moving into 2025. But with, with the presidential election this year, we didn't want to take any possible chances of, of equipment failure with the new machines.
So we're not using the electronic poll books?
We are using electronic...
We just have the backup plan in place?
Correct.
Okay. Yep. Yep. That's fine. Just want to make sure. Uh, let me see here, logic. Questions came up of the candidate for the Government Study Commission. Candidates to be on one page. How is that going? I know you're talking about the, you were doing the testing, and yesterday. Yeah. So how, how's that turning out? Could you just speak to that?
So that, that is what I was mentioning earlier with the scrolling. Um, we weren't able to accommodate fitting all seventeen candidates on one screen. Um, there were concern, several concerns, uh, that were brought up during the, the research of this, accessibility concerns, um, and, and various other issues. So what we ultimately determined was we would continue with the same process. Uh, we did denote at the beginning of that contest with a bold red header that says there are seventeen candidates for this contest. You must scroll down to see all candidates. Um, and we are placing a, a sticker as well on the machines themselves. So before the voter even has the, the ballot pulled up in front of them, there's a note saying there are seventeen candidates on this contest. You need to scroll down in order to see everyone.
That's helpful. That's a good plan. So, I mean, these are, it's Dominion machines. They wouldn't allow the, the font changing or whatever.
It's not, it's not that they wouldn't allow. It's just, uh, we did confer with our consultant, the Department of State, uh, our Office of Law and Dominion. We were advised not to put, uh, all the candidates, uh, on one page, uh, for various reasons. One, we would have been slightly, uh, below the requirement, the font requirement, uh, for ADA. Uh, and then we were advised that there's potential litigation, uh, because there's a certain, first of all, it's different than the actual hard ballot. Uh, and, and the setup, if you have columns, uh, may imply that people who are further down are up. Uh, so, uh, we were absolutely, it was universal. We were advised, uh, not to do that. So we came up with this solution, uh, so that it's clear, uh, you need to... So we came up with this solution so that it's clear, you need to scroll down to see all of the candidates, and then we will have something on, on the machines indicating that as well.
Makes sense. Thanks, Croco Mo. And I think that does it. I mean, one of the candidates said he had a problem with the casting of ballots. Have you strained that out with that candidate? Has your office done that?
We have, we are completely in compliance with the casting of ballots.
Which was the opinion that was given by Attorney Malino at the Election Board.
Okay.
And I believe there's a memo out there, or there will be a memo out there that we will circulate to Council.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Miss Croco. Thanks, Ms. Cook.
Ms. Krushenovsky.
I just had a quick question. I know that normally you don't have independents voting, but are they allowed to do mail-in ballots independently?
Yep, absolutely.
And when is the deadline to do them?
I'm sorry?
When is the deadline to request a mail-in ballot?
April 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Piggybacking off of the Vice Chair's question, we have paper. Is it loaded into the machines?
It is.
And we're sure it's not wet?
I am positive. We installed a different temperature system back in the beginning of 2023.
Great.
Yes.
If you want the numbers, I did find it. We ordered 800,000 sheets to go with our existing unopened stock of 122,000. So we have a total of 922,000 in packages. We have approximately 1,000 sheets remaining in each of the 710 machines from November. So that makes it 710,000. And then we have a total paper supply of 1,632,000 sheets of paper. 1 million. We have over a million. We will not run out of paper.
Mr. Rilovich?
Yes, real quick. So any independent that is on the permanent mailing list will receive a ballot and don't have to take any further action?
As long as they applied for the year of 2024, yes, they will.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't accidentally skipped because they're not usually involved in that process.
Right. So the term permanent does not permanently give you a ballot.
Yeah.
It means that you permanently want to receive an application for a ballot. Once you apply for the year, you get a ballot for the year. It should be termed as an annual application, but, but it is the, as long as they have applied for the year of 2024, and we sent those notices out to all of our permanent voters back in January.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Cook. And thank you very much for the LNA testing, the opportunity to go there yesterday. It was actually very informative. And just on, Mr. Haas, on your issue with the Government Study Commission, I don't think that we can make it any more apparent on that ballot marking device that there are 17 candidates and that you have to scroll down. It's, it's very, very plain, very bold. And I mean, you know, I understand that there sometimes can be complications with technology and, and some individuals with it. But I think that, I think we're doing this best we can. And I know I've talked to several Government Study Commission candidates, and they have indicated to me that, that they're satisfied with, with, with the way that it looks. And, you know, they can certainly go and view it if they want to. So, yeah. All right. Next, we'll have the bridge update.
Prior to the engineers in Benish, and I believe we may have Sarah Hailstone on Zoom, I just want to give some background. On March 11th, I did send an email to Dominic Unusi that said, after speaking with various council members as well as state and federal officials, is it possible to reassess the costs of Option 2 and Option 3? If so, can this be done within the next two weeks? Since then, I will report that we will be on the agenda, the April 9th agenda of the MPO, asking that we be put on the tip. And hopefully, we will be on, put on a tip and be able to generate some other monies that can be used for the construction of the bridge. And as Mr. Unusi will point out, we are working to try to secure other, other monies as well. And so I just wanted to give you that, that background before the engineers start their presentation.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Unusi.
Thank you, Ramilda, and thank you, Council, for the opportunity tonight. I'm Dominic Unusi with Alfred Benish and Company. This is John Connect, one of my colleagues at Benish who worked on this report. Online is Sarah Hale, Hailstone, which we reference their report in here. And that report done by Sarah Hailstone, that was commissioned by the South Valley Cog to further investigate community impacts. So we, we attached that, we'll have that attached to our, our final report. So as, as Ramilda mentioned, since the last meeting, we took into account all of the comments from Council, the comments from the community, as well as the comments from administration. And we refined the report somewhat, which is, which is normal in the preliminary design stage. You present the first report, you get your input, and then you refine it from there. So what we have tonight is, is the updated presentation. The report will be finalized after tonight once, if there's no more comments or concerns to be addressed. So we talked about the project location. Everybody knows where it is, in between Nanticoke and West Nanticoke. And then the, the existing structure, which we all know, is in, in bad, bad condition. It's on its last leg. There is numerous Priority 1 repairs that are required on the, on the structure, which requires the structure, those Priority 1s, to be inspected every six months. The main, the main spans over the Susquehanna River have to be inspected fully once a year, in addition to those bearings every six months. The spans leading up to the bridge, which are on the Nanticoke side of the river, they have to be inspected every two years. Right now, we are in the midst of the, let's just say, the one-year inspection of the main trusses. I believe tomorrow, we'll be doing the river inspection of the main trusses. Going on into the opportunities for roadway improvements.
Yes. So to build on to the structural concerns, there are some roadway improvements that could be made as part of this project. You can see there's vertical and horizontal clearance issues in the lower left photo. The bridge is very narrow. The upper right photo, you could see we did an analysis for larger vehicles turning right from the bridge onto Route 11, and it's not ideal, the way that they have to swing out into the opposing lane. And then also, in the lower right, you can see that we laid out an area that would be designated for a right turn lane with future development in the area possible. It would warrant a right turn lane, dedicated right turn lane onto Route 11. So we laid out a potential area for that in that photo there. So we went over this last time. We went through three alternatives that we developed with the county. The first one being a rehabilitation alternative where the trusses remain in place and they're repaired on location. The 21 approach spans leading up to the trusses, the beams and deck would be replaced on those, and the piers would be rehabilitated. Unfortunately, that would, this alternative would not allow for widening of the bridge. It would not allow for the additional turn lane, and it would require a detour during construction. Alternative number two, we call it the partial replacement. This would be where we replace the three long-span trusses over the river with four new steel beam spans. And again, on the 21 approach spans, we'd be replacing the beams and the deck. This would allow us to widen the bridge and provide the turning lane. However, it would still require a detour during construction. And then finally, the relocation, a completely new bridge built to the west of the existing bridge. We, we would end up with a wider bridge. We would have the turning lane, and there would be no detour during construction. On the next slide, this is just an aerial view showing the two, the green represents the Alternative 1 and Alternative 2, where everything would remain on the existing alignment. And then Alternative 3 is shown in blue, and this is where we'd be building off alignment. And you could see we take out the kink in the bridge, and we soften the curve on the south side, and we widen the deck and provide the turning lane. So this is just what it would look like in the field for Alternative 1. Everything would look pretty much the same. We're just rehabilitating what's out there. The trusses would remain in place, but on the approach spans, we'd be doing, replacing the deck and the beams. Alternative 2, the partial replacement, you can see that the trusses are now gone. Where there were three spans previously, there's now four spans, and we would have a steel beam bridge spanning over the river. And again, we'd replace the beams and the deck on the approach spans. Alternative 3, this is the relocation, and it would wind up being a, a 12-span bridge built off alignment, everything new.
And then we get into the design considerations. We refined the design considerations a little bit from our last report, where we're concentrating more on the more critical items, which are in green, the structural design, the historical and public use impacts, traffic and safety, cost comparisons, construction schedule, and community impacts. And then on community impacts, which we had in our previous report, our previous report in Appendix I discussed road users' liquidated damages, which is a, a cost associated with those users of the bridge that would have to take that two and a half to three-mile detour around the bridge during the, during the construction process. In addition, as I mentioned, Hailstone Economics, they provided a report that was funded by the South Valley Cog, and they identify other community impacts as well in, in their study, in addition to the ones that we had in our previous study. So on to the next slide, we, these are some of the, the key, oh, these are some of the key impacts that were identified in the Hailstone report. In the upper right-hand corner, that is the road users' liquidated damages cost, which was, again, in our previous report, but they, they highlighted in their report. So option, option 1, it's, the total cost burden is around 18 million, and then for option 2, it's about 15 million. And they, again, their burden's on the general public. They also talk about CO2 emissions in the left-hand side, and then the number of businesses and some business loss in there. And again, they're the experts on that, so we, we just refer to their report from that. And again, Sarah Hailstone's online if anybody has any questions regarding that item. So taking everything into account, reassessing it, breaking out the costs somewhat, we went on to our, our alternative recommended at this point is Alternative 3. Alternative 3 and Alternative 2 basically have the same width of bridge. This one, we provided this one as a recommended alternate because of the, the lesser amounts of community impacts from that. So on to the next slide, costs. On this slide, the costs are still the same. However, we broke them out a little bit because some people were asking, where are these costs coming from? Where, where are they? How, could you break them down more? So if you go across the top line, there's the cost for Alternative 1, 2, and 3 for the structure cost. Then the next line is the miscellaneous costs, roadway, E&amp;S, and right-of-way. Then each, each project has a contingency built in at 20%, with the total construction cost going from Alternative 1 to 3, from 47.8 to 40.5 to 53.6 million. And then on Alternative 3, we broke out the removal of the bridge because of, that could be done later. The bridge could be built, that could be removed later as a separate project, separate funding to put the, the dollars associated that the county has in hand now towards the construction of the bridge. So I know that the county has like $50 million allocated towards this bridge. They would like to use some additional funds for some other projects. So let's just say we have a project cost of Alternative 3 at 53.6 million. There's other funding available for that, as well as Ramilda indicated that on the tip on April 9th, they're going to consider placing this project on the state tip for about $10 million. Now, that would be up to the MPO to vote upon that. So that is.
Excuse me, I just want to note, there's no monetary determination yet.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm sorry about that, Ramilda. So they're going to be considering that project on the tip for the, for April the 9th. Going down to the lower portion of the construction cost, there is, there's the, the total construction cost on the top line, and then the, the community costs underneath that, as well as the detour duration, as well as the construction duration. Then on the next slide, again, the, the severity, whether it's severe, moderate, or low, those items stayed the same. We went more with, more with the critical items, and then we added the community impacts. And as you could see, Alternative 1 was severe because of the limitations to that, and Alternative 2 and 3 were moderate. And then we went with, we determined to suggest Alternative number 3 because of the, the community impacts. Then further on, any questions? But before I go on to any questions on that, as you're aware, the Hailstone report was also attached to the agenda for your, for your information. So with that, open it up for questions.
All right, Council members, I'll call on you. First, let me just ask, the condition of the bridge currently, is, is there any indication that it will be able to remain open throughout the construction of a new bridge?
It's hard to say. We can't really say that. It's, again, it's being inspected every year, and every year when it's inspected, or every six months, the Priority 1s. If something's changed or something's concerning, it could be recommended to close the bridge down. So.
Okay. So that could happen at any time at any inspection?
It could happen anytime at any inspection.
And you don't really have an indication of, like, any type of, like, members on the bridge or anything? I apologize if I'm using the wrong terminology, but any part of the bridge that may be in a situation where, you know, you inspected it, let's say, yesterday, and then in six months, you inspect it again, and you say, okay, I think we're at the point now?
Correct. I mean, it could be, there could be a shift, there could be an oversized load that went over the, the, the structure that wasn't supposed to go over there. So right now, the critical items are the, are the Priority 1s, which are, which are the bearings on the, on the main structure. And as you saw in that one photo, they're severely rusted, and they're recommended to be upgraded and replaced. So just to give you an idea, we did bid those out several years ago. I think I think it was 2019 or 2020. And those numbers came in to do the Priority 1s. We're in the neighborhood, and that's not the pins, it was just the bearings. It came in around, they say about $2.5 million. So that was 2019. Now, we could be looking anywhere from $3 to $5 million to, just to repair that bridge, to make, to take care of those issues. And then, once the bridge was, excuse me, replaced, that money would, wouldn't be, be able to recoup. That would be spent on that.
I just have two more questions, really quick.
Sure.
So in Option 3, would that cost that you just mentioned for repairing the bridge, as it is now, to keep it structurally, structurally sound with the Priority 1 items, is that included in that?
No. Alternative 3 keeps the bridge open as it is now, as the detour route while the new bridge is being built.
Right.
So, no, there is no repairs of the Priority 1s as part of Alternative 3. No.
Okay. And how about on Alternative 2, I think it would be, would the widening and the turning lanes would, well, I know the widening's included, but would the turning lanes be included in that? And would it affect, also in Alternative 3, would that affect any private property owners? I know we got a couple of questions and complaints at our Nanticoke Town Hall about that.
Yes. All the options, excuse me, Option number 2 and Option number 3, they both have right-of-way items associated with it. There's some total takes, there's some partial takes, there's some temporary construction items. And in the final report, we have that outlined. And in the final report, we have that outlined, and we have it outlined with names of property owners in there. So that'll be more, more described in the, in the future report.
Okay, thank you. We'll start, we'll go counterclockwise. Ms. Smith?
I appreciate the inclusion of the community impacts and the numbers. I think it's a very important thing to consider, and the numbers are alarming. However, just a question, the date on this, on this report is March 19th, and today's is 26th. So was this all compiled in, in five days?
It was compiled, that was compiled, I'm going to say over about a two-week period. And we got, we got the, their final report last Thursday. So we attached it as, as an add-on to our report. And if you saw in the estimate that we had up there on the screen, we, we had our costs in there for road users' liquidated damage that we calculated, which is standard for such types of projects, like it's, it's usually standard on any type of PennDOT project. And then for additional community costs, we just refer to the Hailstone report individually.
And do you know how they compiled it? Do they speak to business owners? Do they speak to people in?
Sarah Hailstone, I believe, is online. And Sarah, would you like, or could you unmute yourself?
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that. So-
Okay.
Thank you.
We used, we used data from, whether it be ESRI, which is the Environmental Systems Research Institute. We used data from PennDOT, DEP, the Census Bureau, as well as a number of other data points.
Is that, are you done with your questions? Ms. Smith?
So you didn't speak to any businesses or residents?
We did not speak to any businesses directly. I mean, I've been to meetings where I've heard businesses speak about their concerns, but we used, we used data, accepted data points.
Thank you.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, hi. Thanks, gentlemen, for coming. Ms. Hailstone, also, did this perceived NOCERA plant play any part in your economic data? The one that's proposed, NOCERA, nothing, nothing whatsoever?
We, we did not use proposed data. We used existing businesses.
Okay. Gentlemen, did NOCERA representatives or anything like that represent them coming into play with this decision whatsoever?
No, we know nothing about NOCERA, that's not part of our report, and-
Okay. I'm just saying, I had heard, a lot of this just seems very arbitrary to me because we, you had a great presentation, and now there's many things that are changing. When you were here last time, I fully support gaining revenues from areas, but now it seems like the scope has changed, there's different factors coming in here, and this is just very difficult to swallow. I don't know if you can address that, but that's just my major concern, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's a little disturbing to me, to be honest with you.
Understood. And I just want to let you know, we were asked to highlight community impacts as part of this. There were questions about community impacts, and there was also questions about breaking out the costs of the, of the, of the bridge. So that's basically what we, what we, what we updated in the presentation and in the report. And then if, again, if council's okay with what's been presented here, no more questions, we'll, we'll compile that final report. So understood, Mr. Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Haas. Mr. Lescavage?
So my concerns are exactly what Chair Lombardo talked about, and he brought up a valid point, which I was thinking about because of your last conversation here. There was no guarantees that that bridge is going to stay open past the next six months. So these numbers that you put forward, to me, are irrelevant. They mean nothing. And if these numbers are true in 2.6 years, then what's West Pittston and the Pittston area feeling after six years? When there's probably four times the amount of people affected? But that was never even a consideration for West Pittston or Pittston as far as a timeframe for a bridge to be built. So these numbers, to me personally, they mean nothing. I will say, I'm on board for alternative number two, for the simple fact that me personally, as a county person sitting here for county council, would like to see some more of that money spread around the county to fix other roads. I think the last number we have for shortcomings was right around $100 million in this county. So not to set some of this money aside that we went out all these years to borrow, I think would be foolish on our part. The other thing too is this idea about building a new bridge and ripping down the other one later, I, that annoys me too. Because are we going to wait five more years and watch it go from 9.5 to 12.5? Are we going to have a flood and have two bridges there flow in the river? I mean, there's a lot, and then the last thing too is, I don't know if you're familiar with the term attractive nuisance, but to have that bridge standing there and have kids playing on it and fall in the river, that would be a bad thing also. So there's a lot of things here that I think that were overlooked. And it really annoys me that you come back here with some of this that, I'm going to stop because I'm really frustrated that this comes out of left field in the last two days before this meeting. It really bothers me. And then I get a 289-page report to look. I, I worked this past weekend, so you know what? I didn't have time to look through all of that. I tried to look through it before tonight, but I don't think it's fair to spring this upon us in the last 36 hours. So with that being said, I just want to let you know, I'm a little disgusted with the way this all went down.
Understood. We were asked to be prepared for tonight, and soon as we got that last report, we submitted it to administration for the work session. So we're just here presenting, being engineers here tonight. And while I say the, the removal of existing structure could be done later, it's not like it could be done five years from now. That's the last phase of a, basically a six-year project.
I understand that, but if we don't have the money, then it's not coming down. Are we supposed to go out and spend that money to remove it when we can go with alternative two and have, if I remember right, back in the first go-around, you had claimed that the life expectancy for the alternate two and the new one would be kind of the same?
Yeah, correct. The spans over the river are going to be, they're going to all be brand-new, so they would be the same. There would be potentially some maintenance issues on the approach spans on the substructures, units. So that's, that's consistent, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, if I could speak to where some of this, where some of this information came from, the Lower South Valley Council of Governments members became very concerned when they heard that the bridge could be closed for approximately two-and-a-half to three years. And that's when they approached us to say that it could have an excessive impact on their citizens. And they were concerned about the cost and essentially the tax on their citizens that would have to detour around for the length of the closing of the bridge. And so they asked us to look at those impacts and see what it really, you know, what was it really significant? What were the facts behind it? And that's why we looked into this, because, you know, Nantacoke and Plymouth Township and Plymouth Borough and Hanover Township and Newport Township and Ashley are all municipalities that are members of the cog and have concerns about the bridge being closed, not just for the economic community impacts of it, but for their, their safety and their EMS. So we touch on kind of the economic impact of, of the closed bridge and how it affects EMS, but, you know, we can't, we can't speak to the loss in time and how that could potentially impact life.
All right, Mr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Yenuzy, I, we had a lengthy conversation this morning on the phone. I just want to go over a couple of things with you. So the lifespan, expect the lifespan of alternative two is similar to a brand-new bridge of alternative three, correct?
Correct, yes.
And the width, the new width of the bridge under alternative two is the same width of alternative three, correct?
Correct, yes.
And the turning lanes, access and egress from the bridge will be improved under both alternative two and alternative three?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And is safety compromised by going with alternative two over alternative three? Because I saw your report where they discussed safety. I didn't see any differences.
Yeah, no, the, the safety on the bridge, John, if you want to comment on that regarding alternative two-
And if you, not to interrupt you, but if your claim is going to be something's less safe than another, I'd appreciate if you could quantify that.
Right, and you're, and you're relying basically on just driving over the bridges itself, correct?
Or accidents per month or per year on each alternative?
Right, understood.
If you have the data fine, if you don't, that's okay too. I would just appreciate, say you don't have it, you know?
The only improvement that I would say is that there is currently a kink on the bridge midway through, and then also on the approach, there's a more of a curve than ideal. And you'll see in our report, there are accident clusters specifically on that southern approach.
Is there going to be any improvement in a radius, a radii?
There would be, yes. We would soften that curve on the southern side for alternative three, yes.
Okay, and you just, it's a go.
Alternative two, it would be the same alignment and-
Same alignment, okay. Alternative two is alternative three, thank you. Mr. Yenuzy stated a couple minutes ago that there'd be some taking of properties with either alternative two or alternative three.
Correct, yes.
Which alternative would involve taking more properties?
Alternative three.
Three?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I want to continue, and I want to ask Ms. Hailstone, Ms. Hailstone, you're on the wire?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to confirm a couple of things. Who hired your firm to do this report?
The Lower South Valley Council of Governments.
Okay. And who paid for, who paid your firm for this report?
The Lower South Valley Council of Governments has committed to the payment.
Thank you. Did anybody else contribute financially to your firm to do this report?
No, just the, just the cog. I expect it will be the cog.
Okay. And in your report, you have other community impacts on your last page. In our packet, it's page 152 of 152. I give council a minute to turn to that. You state, and let me just say for the record, I mean, obviously, the lower value cog, the lower valley cog, South Valley cog is a great organization, and they, they absolutely have the interest of their local residents and businesses at heart, and as far as safety and emergency vehicles and whatnot. And I agree with them. I agree with them that this is something that if I was on that cog, I would do the same thing that I did. I would hire a firm like yours to do this report. However, I just want to point out a couple of things. The first sentence you write, the community is in favor of replacing that bridge. Which community are you referring, are you referring to the local communities, or are you referring to the entire Luzerne County community?
No, we are referring to the, the community that was represented at the town hall, which were primarily that neighboring communities.
Which would be in the cog, thank you. And specific concerns were expressed, your first bullet point says, putting more money into a deteriorating bridge is not a good use of money. However, we've been told here by Mr. Yenuzy in past meetings that alternative two is basically replacing the entire top part of the, the bridge, and it would not be a bad use of the money. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I don't agree with that first bullet point. Both, second bullet point, both towns would be crippled. That's a very harsh word. I don't think they'd be crippled because we're living it in the Pittston area, where I live in West Pittston, Mr. Lombardo lives in Pittston. It is terribly inconvenient. There are some really bad days associated with it, but I wouldn't characterize it as crippling. So I don't agree with that bullet point. And then your third bullet point says, your decision here to take into account future needs of residents. Again, not to be redundant, but clarify, which residents are you talking about? The cog's residents or the all of the county residents?
The residents represented at the town hall meeting.
Okay, thank you. And, and the fourth bullet point, I find kind of really a little shocking, the closed bridge would prevent people from leaving the area if there was a nuclear disaster. That probably would apply to every county and every state in the country. Now, I know the Berwick Power Plant is there. If that had some kind of nuclear disaster, I'm sure people would not be fleeing towards the, the power plant. They'd be fleeing the other way, which is Route 11 North and in, you know, 20981 probably. But I find that an interesting use of a language there. One thing I stated here, and I'm not faulting you for doing this report, you were hired to do it by the cog. The cog absolutely has the best interests of their local towns at heart. The cog, unlike the 11 people sitting up here, the cog has the best interest of their local residents at heart, where this council needs to be more global in our vision and our decision-making. We have another 300,000-plus residents in the county to be concerned for right here. And I'd like to quickly just frame how we got to this point today. And for the benefit of everybody here and out in Zoomland, and for the benefit of the new council members, two years ago, we held some very spirited conversations and debates in this room, at that podium, with the Redevelopment Authority, with local banks, all pushing us to borrow 50 to 55 million to do what we were told, a 40 to 42 million dollar bridge, a new bridge, 40 to 42 million. And they claimed that extra 13 million, you could use for all your county bridges, your county roads, 120 miles. Eventually, council voted in favor of it. I don't think I was one, because I hate to see us borrow money. Mr. McGinley was correct before he left. He spent his whole time here since Home Rule was implemented, and I respect him highly. He stated all the time, we never borrowed any more money. This county borrowed money out their ears, for years and years and years, and ran up a debt of 466 million. The county residents are paying the price to this day. 12 years later, we're still paying off that debt to the tune of $26 million every year. That's money we just throw out the window. I did not want to see us borrow any more money, but we did. And we did it based on the fact that the gambling money would be coming in every year, and it was pretty much guaranteed, assured, but not really. It could stop someday if something changes, or new legislators maybe are in Harrisburg. So at any rate, as council members, we still have 120 miles of terrible roads. I agree with Ms. Smith and Mr. Haas and Mr. Lescavage. All their comments are very well said and asked, and, and they're very big concerns. I, I for one cannot, we promised the rest of the county, out of that 55 million, we would have 12 or 13 million left, and to their terrible, some terrible bridges in this county, some bridges in severe disrepair, that eventually, we close them now and then. And yeah, they're over a creek or stream, but they, they close the vital road, especially in the southern part of the county. Mr. Perry could attest to that in recent years. And who, who did the economic study or impact study on those residents? They're not taking a three-mile detour like in Nantacoke. They're taking a 10 to 15-mile detour, all those cars, every day. Ms. Hailstone, when you, when you make a conclusion like this and an impact statement, I, I'm concerned because it doesn't seem like you took in the account of us losing that extra 13 million, which from a 42 million now is a 54, 55 million dollar bridge. I'm concerned that you didn't do a full impact study of how those other residents are going to be impacted, because we no longer have the money to repair their bridges and roads, which is what would happen here if we voted for alternative three. And, and that's, that's all I have for you, Ms. Hailstone, but I have some concerns for Mr. Yenuzy. Now, I was looking at the new report we, we found tonight. Here, first, I'd like council to turn to on your desk, this report with the green on the front. And if you turn to page 31 and leave it open at that page, I want to point out a couple of things. Now, mind you, and I had to ask Mr. Yenuzy this question in a minute, this report was produced in December '23, three months ago, three months ago. And I'm going to summarize it- in December '23, three months ago, three months ago. And I'm going to summarize it, because this is the final review and recommendation. If you look at that color chart, it's bad if you see the red word severe. That's a bad thing for that alternative. Alternative three has four red severe's lending itself to an overall rating of severe on the bottom, the worst rating of the three alternatives. The absolute best rating, alternative two, had one severe, one, two, three, four low-impact categories. And it attained an overall rating of low impact, or the least impact. If you read, and I'm not going to read below, but he goes on to explain why alternative three is not a recommended alternative to progress. Alternative one is not a recommended alternative to be progressed. Alternative two has four moderate ratings and only one severe rating, and this alternative is recommended to be progressed. Now, fast forward to tonight, we get this new report. It's in the work session, and if you scroll all the way back to second half of your packet, and the work session's broken into two packets. If you look at page 140 of 152, you'll see the same table. Well, not really. The table's been altered, altered. If you put that table side by side on page 140 next to the old table, you'll see the categories of concern or ratings, the list is greatly reduced. So now, instead of four severe ratings in alternative three, we only have two severe ratings in alternative three. Oh, we conveniently left off environmental permitting, which is severe in the old report. That doesn't appear now on the new report. And we left off utilities. That was severe under the old report. Doesn't exist under the new report. And under the old report, under right-of-way, there was a moderate impact or moderate concern. That doesn't even appear on this new report under alternative three. And also, threatened and endangered species dropped off the list. That was a moderate concern under alternative three in the old report, just three months ago. Now it doesn't even appear. And hydraulic impacts, that's the hydrology of the river. That's interrupting, interfering at the flow of the river, which Mr. Lescavich correctly stated, could have a pretty severe impact in a flooding situation under alternative three. So, to drop off, you know, the severe's and the moderate ratings, that's the only way that Mr. Yenuzy and the Bennis firm could attain a moderate overall rating on the bottom, where just three months ago, it was a severe rating. I find that alarming. I find it concerning. And I find it, like we all know, in scientific experiments, many scientists tweak the parameters of the experiment to reach the results they want at the end. And I fear some of that's going on here. And I got to ask Ms. Hailstone, why did you wait so long to submit a report seven, you've dated it seven days ago, and I, council only saw it on Friday, four days ago. Why the 11th hour of such drastic data? Why now?
So, we were just engaged by the land bank, or I'm sorry, by the COG, was only on the 13th of March. So, we've been working on it as quickly as we could and got it out the door as quickly as we could.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hailstone, I'm just wondering, you said something just now that doesn't agree with something you just said earlier. Now, the report's dated March 19th, and you said that you were reached out only on the 13th, but you also said that you collected data for two weeks, I believe you said? So how could that be, how could that be possible?
Yeah, I think Dominic said that. I didn't say that.
Okay, I'm pretty sure.
That's exactly what she told me.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can tell you that we knew it was on the agenda to be voted on for the Lower South Valley COG meeting, but it wasn't voted on until that day.
It wasn't voted on to have the report commissioned until the 13th, but you were working on the report before the 13th?
My team and I started talking about what, yeah, we had to put together a proposal. I mean, if that's what you're talking about.
Not exactly, but, okay. All right, I think this is getting into the minutia a little bit, although it's pretty significant.
I have one final concern, if I could, Mr. Chair. Mr. Yenuzy, I, again, I'm looking at both reports and are very concerned. So, you suddenly, in receipt of the Hailstone report, you told me today that was a partial factor in changing your recommendation from option two to option three, because you included it here with the packet tonight.
Yeah, I mean, the Hailstone report did provide a little bit of input towards where our recommendation is for community impacts, okay? But it's not, it's not fully. We took into account the road users' liquidated damages as well. That was in part of the last report.
Okay.
That wasn't included as one of the factors.
All right. Absent of this Hailstone report, if it never came about, I asked you this on the phone this morning, I just want you to confirm. I asked if there was no Hailstone report, would you still advocate for alternative three with the bridge cost at 54 million and hopefully getting to 10 million from somewhere for the demolition of the old bridge? You said, yes, you would. Is that still your position?
I would say with the potential new funding sources, I think alternative three would be, again, this is just based on the community impacts. Alternative three would be better, would have less community impacts, which sometimes we take into account on different projects. Again, alternative two is also an alternative that council could decide, and ultimately, it's council's decision.
Okay, thank you. So, I read Hailstone's report. It was based on some of your data. There's roughly 11,000 residents living within a five-minute drive of that bridge, okay? The Pittston area has over 22,000 residents within five miles, or five minutes of their bridge. That's closed currently. Right there, the impact in Pittston, the cost is not 15 million like it would be here in this case. It would have to be at least 30 million. And the other factor is, Mr. Lescavich stated, the Pittston Bridge is closed and will be closed for a minimum of five years, maybe six, not half years as what we're discussing here. That would double that impact, economic impact to the local residents even again, from 30 million to 60 million. My point of that story is, if we based these recommendations and spending all the county money here and not addressing any other county roads, based on the total impact of the local residents, no bridge would get built. Pittstones would never get built, because 60 million added on to the current price tag of 25 billion for the actual bridge would be now an $85 million bridge. So I don't agree with you adding those costs in your new report to the 40 million price tag. You bring it up to 55 billion. I think that's unfair to the council here. I don't think that should have been done. And I'm just, I'm just shocked. I really am that you would take this route. And one other thing I want to ask you, you are working for the county. We're a client, okay? I don't know if you're working for the COG, or if they're a client of yours.
No.
You are the county's client. We pay you, and as such, as the West Hazelton-Borough Bridge failed recently and needs a total replacement, you're familiar with the horrible bridge conditions of the almost 300 bridges we have in this county. You're familiar with that. And in light of that familiarity, you're advocating that we use up this entire 55 million on this new bridge rather than save 13 million for all of those other dire county needs out there. Is that your position?
No, sir, that's not my position. My position is, our position came up on alternative three because of the new funding sources that became available in the last several weeks.
We don't have new funding services, do we?
There's no guarantee. I mean, I'm working on it. There may be some other funds that are available. There's no guarantee. I mean, I, my request was to, because of the costs, whether it's to refurbish or to rebuild, I made an overture, let's try to contain costs, with the understanding that the longer we put a decision off, no matter what we do, whether we refurbish or whether we rebuild, the cost is going to go up and up and up. So we want to contain the costs, and if we, I'm not an engineer, but if we could relook at the cost to rebuild or refurbish, lower the costs, and if I can go out and try to get other funds, I want to be able to do that. I want to be able to do that in really a quick amount of time. We don't have, we don't have a large time period to do construction work. The, whatever we do, there are going to be environmental, we have to pass environmental permitting and environmental oversight by DEP. There's still even historical, whether we rebuild or refurbish, we're going to have to go through that historical protocol. That takes years, along with designs. I don't want to leave the next administration with three-quarters of a bridge. I don't want to leave the next administration looking back and saying, well, why didn't that county manager try to do this, or do something to reduce the cost? So, I wanted to know, can we reduce the costs? And I am in conversations with various sources to perhaps get funding. There are no guarantees. But, you know, I'm hitting the sidewalk and pounding the sidewalk to get as much money as we possibly can, not only just for this bridge, but for other projects. What I'd like to do is build a patchwork of, we can do something with this bridge, whatever is best for the area and for the county. And I would like to be able to use some of that LSA money for the projects that have been approved by the CFA, so that we can have the benefits across the board. I wish I had more answers for you tonight when it comes to funding. I don't, but I can tell you that I'm doing my best to try to get as much funding as possible beyond the LSA money, so that we can free up some of that LSA money for the other projects.
All right, Mr. Thornton just wants to finish up.
Just to finish up finally, I just want to add, a couple of years ago, again, some of the council members sitting here, we made promises to people around the county that we would save some of this $55 million loan and address their dire needs in their part of the county. We're talking the southern half of Luzern County, the Hazelton area, and the Back Mountain area, other areas of the county. And I'm not going to thumb my nose that those residents have pulled that money back now and say sorry. So, that's where I stand right now, and I think it's time council be sincere and truthful to all the residents. And I want to thank Mr. Yenuzy for being here, for your comments, and Ms. Hailstone, thank you for appearing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. McDermott.
When you were here last time, you had mentioned that the piers would be used in option number two. And I had asked about the life, you know, the life expectancy of those piers, and at that time, you said you didn't know. If they're going to just be, if we use the existing piers, how could that have the same life expectancy as a totally brand-new bridge?
That's a good question. The spans over the river would have the same life expectancy because both alternates number two and alternates number three are full substructure and superstructure replacements. The approach spans coming from Nanticoke to the river, the superstructure would have the same lifespan as the superstructure of alternative three. However, we did say that the substructure for alternate number two would have less of a life expectancy as opposed to the substructure in alternate number three, because that, those substructures are about 50 years old now.
So I'd have worries, and I mentioned it at the time, I would have worries of that holding up. If we build a brand-new bridge on top of them and they don't hold up, that's a waste of money. Also, just going back to Mr. Thornton's question about the money coming to the county, the Pennsylvania General Assembly approved an Act of 24 of 2021 creating the Luzern Public Infrastructure Fund. Subject to the terms and conditions of Act 24 of 2021, the Commonwealth Financing Authority, CFA, is required to distribute $3 million in funds annually from the Luzern County Local Share Account for a period of 25 years to the Luzern County Redevelopment Authority for construction, maintenance, and upgrades of local public infrastructure projects. And then, as you know, the RDA letter did have the Nanticoke Bridge as their primary, let me just see how it's said here, "Has accepted the application from the county of Luzern requesting funding for nine infrastructure projects, and it is recommending the following projects for approval." The nine infrastructure projects are listed below. But it does say that it had to have the main bridge, Nanticoke, as their main earmark. So, both the RDA and the county have earmarked the West Nanticoke Bridge Reconstruction Project as the priority project for available funding. I just wanted to state that. If there was any question about, you know, the first time we talked about it, we knew that it was going to be earmarked for the Nanticoke Bridge.
Any other, any other questions or comments, Ms. McDermott? Okay, anybody, Mr. Olovich?
All right, I know we talked all about the bridges. Now, my biggest concern is the flooding impact. We've had so many floods in this area. I believe the Plymouth Flats, Plains, I mean, they would all be affected if there's two superstructures at the same time in that area. So how would having two bridges there impact the flooding if there were to be a flood in that area?
Well, having two sets of substructure units in the river would affect the backwater of the river. So yes, it would affect.
Were there any studies on what kind of impacts it would have? Because I looked through all of these reports, and I really don't see anything about flooding in here.
There would be an impact, and that would be part of the, that would be part of the more detailed design aspect of the, of the project.
One thing that would be an option would be, under the new bridge, with 11 new piers placed in the floodway and in the stream itself, you could balance that by removing some of the approach spans, not a full, your big cost of your removal is going to be taking those trusses out. You might be able to get away with removing several of those approach spans at a much lower cost. It's just something that we could look at to balance the hydraulic loss caused by the new bridge. Take out some of those small, tiny piers on the approach.
Well, my question is, you're having two bridges at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, so the idea would be.
So you're going to take a superstructure from the one bridge while it's still in use?
Right, he's saying. After we switch traffic over to alternative three.
Well, I'm talking while it's under construction.
Oh, while it's under, yes.
You obviously can't remove things from a structure that's being used.
Correct, yeah. There's typically hydraulic impacts during temporary conditions. You're almost always going to adversely impact hydraulics during construction, a lot of times.
But the hydraulic was removed from the new report. It was a severe rating, but it was removed on the latest report.
So I think in our report, it won't be removed. You'll see, yeah, well, so we isolated down what we found that was the most critical elements. And we, earlier in the presentation, you can find them highlighted in green. Those are the same ones that were highlighted in green in our first presentation. We did identify these as the most critical elements from the very start. And all we did was just take out some of those other ones that weren't very, were, like, you see threatened and endangered species, and you think that's very significant, but the actual impacts caused by any of them to threatened and endangered species isn't very significant. But some are worse than others, so we did rate them as severe, moderate, and low.
But you also dropped the moderate, low-moderate ratings for alternative two, which impacted your overall rating and raised it to moderate. And that's a concern to me, because now you have less, you took the green ones out, the good ones for alternative two.
Yes.
And you took the most severe ones out of alternative three, and to make the report reflect more favorably towards alternative three.
Yes.
So is flooding considered in the new rate? And that was my biggest.
Oh, flooding, yes, we will consider it in our new report. But I think what we look at as the very final condition, temporary is always negatively impacted. Without a doubt, yes.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I have some questions about the old bridge. There's no guarantee that the old bridge will remain open while you're building. There's no guarantee that the old bridge will remain open while you're building the new bridge, correct?
Correct, there's no guarantees, correct.
And you stated earlier that it would require $5 million of repairs.
It could be, it could be that. Like I said, we bid that out in around 2019, and it came in around $2.5 million. So costs have skyrocketed since then.
We're going to have to pay $5 million to keep it open now, and then $53 million to build a new bridge next to it, and then $9 million to tear it down.
The $5 million is only just to remove the Priority 1 repairs. There are other serious structural concerns that would need to be addressed if you wanted to maintain this long-term.
Okay. Now, let me ask, would reducing the weight limit help with the stress on the bridge? And how do you guys determine what to have the weight limit be to keep it, if sustainable over the three years that we are looking at, if we did a full replacement on the bridge?
Well, right now, it's rated at 15 tons, and it could be, it could be reduced down to 3 tons, where only passenger vehicles could go over top of it, and trucks would not be able to go over it, like, say, medium-sized trucks.
And is there an economic impact if the trucks can't go over it, for those three years?
Yeah, there would be, yes.
Okay.
There would be, yes.
In Pittston, we had a new report performed by, Pendot approved testing firm, engineering testing firm. They approved that bridge to stay open for 6 tons, accommodating cars. Pendot said, no, we're not accepting that report, and they closed the bridge. So there's no guarantee that Pendot's going to allow this old bridge to stay open. I'm just saying, it happened in Pittston.
Understood, yes.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your presentation and taking all our questions. I believe next up, we have the Strategic Initiatives Committee update, Mr. Haas.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just real briefly, everybody, we met, Strategic Initiatives Committee met last Thursday, Ms. Evansen, Ms. Prince Smith, and myself, Mr. Luskavich wasn't able to attend, and we realized that the last time the long-range plan had really been looked at was September of 2017, so it's been a little while. And it was a very fruitful discussion, we were here for almost three hours, and had some input, just about updating things in that, in our long-term plan. One of them that we're certainly going to delete is like the $5 registration fee match. So we're planning to have that next meeting, just codify that, we'll vote on it as a committee and send up to council for its approval, just to make updates. And then going forward, it would be more of an evaluation, just to make sure that we're on the right track for the county and what council wants to do going forward. And we're even looking at the website to make sure that the mission of Luzerne County aligns with the council's goals. And so, just want to keep you apprised of where we're at, and many thanks to Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Shane, I forget her last name, the solicitor.
Messenger.
Messenger, Ms. Messenger, she was fantastic, and my new council colleagues. So it was, I had fun, but I like doing this stuff, so appreciate that. Our next meeting's going to be Thursday, Thursday, April 18th, at 6:30. So if anybody would like to attend, feel free to come on out. All right, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Before we go into public comment, I just wanted to quickly note that our second meeting in April, I don't know if this was indicated on our initial calendar that we got, but our second meeting in April falls on Election Day, April 23rd, so we are going to have to move that. I just wanted to announce that I believe we're going to move it to April 22nd, which will be that Monday. And, you know, we may not send out like a notice in the press and everything when we do our regular meeting notice, but I just wanted to mention that that'll be happening. And we'll now take public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment in the room? Nobody in the room. Okay, anybody on the Zoom call?
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo speaking of Hazleton.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to thank the county manager, the county council, all the division heads for the opening, for the opening of the Southern End and Hazleton City Hall. I truly, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate it, and so do the rest of the people of the Hazleton area, for the county offering the services once again to the forgotten southern half of Luzerne County. Now, we can honestly say that we are not forgotten no more, and it's been 12 years, almost 13 years, since yours truly went to that podium and was hoping, along with the other citizens of the Southern End, that the county would return. And I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for that. As far as Mr. Thornton correction, the county did borrow $20 million to offset the budget impasse that happened during, when Tom Wolfe, the governor, first, his first year in office during the budget impasse. And if anyone needs any details, ask Councilman Haas what happened with that one. So I'm not going to go into details on that one. Mr. Luskavich's concern, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman, the Vice Chair, Thornton, and Mr. Luskavich, and yourself, Mr. Chair, with regards to the concern of, for the unforeseen and unstated delays that would occur with the, you know, with the bridge, total bridge replacement. The big one that nobody talked about, even with the Water Street Bridge replacement and with this bridge, is the fact that, as Mr. Luskavich pointed out, with the river flow, regulating the river flow and the hydrology, the Susquehanna River Basin Commission, the SRBC, would have to come in and give their two cents, and give their blessing, and possibly even the Chesapeake Bay Commission, which as, you know, Mr. Chairman and members of the council who live in the Northern End know, as far as the rain tax goes, the Chesapeake Bay Commission is the regulatory body that regulates the wildlife from the river that goes into the Chesapeake Bay. So they would have to give their two cents as well. So those delays, have they been factored in? I don't think so. So I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Luskavich and yourself and the Vice Chair as far as those delays go. And lastly, the uncashed checks for the magisterial districts. I hope the county manager and yourself, Mr. Chair, look into seeing those uncashed checks for the magisterial districts that the county comptroller brought up. They could be used...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Raybo.
...for offsetting the funding for the staff.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo.
I'll send you the rest in the email, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else for public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
We will.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Meeting's adjourned.